Good evening. There's two seats in front here. If somebody wants to come take these two seats up here. Anybody? Does standing want to come see it? Just not okay if you could change your mind, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Good evening and welcome to February 7th, Riker City Council meeting. Before I get started, can I show of hands who is going to take to the podium in opposition of the proposing housing element tonight? Can I see a raise of hands of opposition who will come to the podium only?
Can we change your mind?
No. Okay. You guys count. I counted thirteen. Yep, that's how I count. Okay. And to show hands is going to come into the podium in support of the housing element plan.
I already graduated.
Twenty-two.
My boys in high school.
Twenty-two.
It everybody. In minutes, you're looking at one hundred and five minutes of public comment if you hold up for each.
Three minutes.
That's going to be ready to call three.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, another idea too is if any people that are reiterating, they can come up for an idea of support, come up for support or against. Unless they're watching, they're bringing something new than maybe give them more time to you.
Okay. So we're going to limit tonight's podium speaking to three minutes on both sides. If someone wants to come to the podium and bring new information that wasn't shared, we'll consider you coming up to the podium. And remember, if you're coming to the podium and try not to follow the person who said the same thing before you because we just heard this. When someone comes to the podium, if you don't have any new information and they've already said what you're going to say, we've already heard that. So we're looking for new information from each speaker that has a different point of view.
Okay for them though to come up and just voice their support.
Yes, of course. Yes. By all means. Okay, so we got that other way. Well, I guess that would be up to the council if they want to ask that question or yeah. Yeah.
I would say.
And if they say if they say they don't want to, that's their right.
On property.
Yeah.
On property rent. You know, I don't, I would think that would be somewhat invasive.
Right. So no. Okay, so we go on to.
That'd be invasive.
Is it on? Sorry. Okay. Okay, great. Special presentations and or announcements. Do we have any tonight? It's okay. Great. Read it. My iPad's not setting up here. Public particip- public comments, public participation is welcome invited by all city council at all city council meetings. This time slot is aside for residents address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on a regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane and disruptive remarks. Council members and recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during public comment section of the meeting. Another Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items not listed on the posted agenda. It's time to set aside for residents address the city on all matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted at the regular agenda, please address the city council when the item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium is electronically adjusted up and down to accommodate the speaker. Should you need additional special accommodations, remote microphone, please note notice the city clerk prior to start of the meeting for arrangements. Please state your name, the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city as a whole, the council's whole, I'm sorry. If you have any documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. Please submit remarks to five minutes will be three minutes on the agenda item. Public comment is not intended to be a question to answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. I'm going to open a public comment and I'm going to leave the public comment. That's for any other item not on the agenda item we discussed on the housing element. So if somebody has any comments to the city council, that's not regarding this item, please come to the podium. You have five minutes. A public comment? All right. Consent agenda, all matters under, I'm sorry, number of public comment follow up. We don't have any public comments, so we're going number five consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda may be considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A rat of approval ratification of payments issued from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two through January thirty, twenty twenty-three. B approval of minutes at of the regular meeting held January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. C approval of minutes of the special meeting held January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. D approval of minutes of a special meeting held January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. E cash balance to the budget to actual and fit official school performance reports for November twenty twenty-two. F approval of the city's biannual budget preparation calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. G continued urgency resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one remote public meetings. H continued urgency ordinance eight sixty-four fireworks. Recommend city action motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the city of Rarica as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
First I had to open up for public comment. Sorry, I need to drink water. I love to public comment on the consent agenda. For the public. Okay, I'll close public on that comment and go to city council. We have a motion from Drake Davis. To approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second Drake Davis's motion. This is Councilman McCoy.
And a second from Councilman McCoy. I will go to roll call to the floor. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Hi.
And I will be I for Councilman Middleton. Motion passes.
Join the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. McCoy, I. I forgot. Yeah. You're right, right by me. This is human resources agenda title approval of the United Employees of California. Is that Luena Luna local seven ninety-two where we got management employees unit agreement representatives for for the city and where you get management employees unit have met and agreed upon compensation over the next twenty-nine months for wages benefits, including healthcare coverage and other compensation likely standby pay or standby pay, remote pay and deferred compensation. This is a recommend city council action motion to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four of the Riker City Council. Riker City approving execution of the memorandum, understanding between the city of Rarica and the Rarica Management Employees Unit. And we have John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
John, I'm the HR director for the city of Rarica. I'd like to present the staff report for approving execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Rarica and United Public Employees of California. Of California.
John, I don't think your microphone's on.
Oh, microphone.
Sorry. I seem to get closer.
We go. Raise it up a little bit better. So this is for the Management Employees Unit, Y M E U. So as far as the discussion, staff has been negotiating with the local public employees of California. Launa local seven nine two UPEC for the Management Employees Unit, Y M E U to reach a memorandum of understanding. The parties agreed on a twenty-nine month term that addresses employee compensation, health benefits which follow. As far as the term, it's a twenty-nine month term. As far as wages, it's a four percent cost of living adjustment affected the first full pay period in February twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-four, there's an additional two percent cost of living adjustment. Salary schedule is the same that we did for the unrepresented unit. A new top step was added to the salary schedule and all the salary schedules were reduced to five steps. Medical premium is the same for all city employees. It's approximately the cost of eighty-five percent of the cost of PERS with some increases in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five for healthcare costs of living. As far as standby pay employees receive standby pay for being assigned to standby on holidays and weekends for daily coverage outside of their work hours. We also added a section for remote pay. If someone takes a call off hours for city business. For medical opt-out, we made some changes to medical opt-out premium. And medical opt-out will go away January first, twenty twenty-eight. And then as far as deferred comp, it went from fifteen hundred dollars to seventeen fifty in twenty twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two. Estimated fiscal impact approximately one hundred and fifty-one thousand and your one hundred and eighty-four thousand and year two and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars in the final term of the contract. And my recommendation as a HR director would be to adopt a resolution for this memorandum of understanding. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. I will go to the public for comment regarding the cited. A public comment. Okay, I'll close public comment and I'll go to the city council for questions. Any questions?
John, can you explain to me how we go from one step to the next?
So steps are a merit step is earned. It's based on work performance. And usually it's one year from your anniversary date from the date of hire or your from when you were promoted. You need satisfactory performance over the course of one year.
And that is by his direct supervisor or Mr. Ledbetter?
It's approved by the direct supervisor, but it also goes through a personal action form where the city manager signs off on it as well. Or is at least aware of it.
Thank you.
The other questions? Okay, I will open to the floor for a motion.
Be the motion.
No, I waited. Yes, I'm just looking for a motion.
This was Councilman McCoy, and I want to thank you for working with Leona. You guys really did work with them to try and get them. You got the language cleaned up and you did a lot of things that are advantageous to the city and were advantageous for them. And I appreciate all you've done. The recommended motion is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four of the city council of Rarica. City of Rarica approving execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Rarica and the Rarica Management Employees Unit known as Leona. I'll Councilman will make that motion.
I have a motion by Council McCoy to have a second.
I'll second the motion.
And a second from Councilman Baker. I will go to floor for roll call. Councilman Keg.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Hi.
I for Middleton and Councilman will pro- pro Tim and boy.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Bless you.
We know who's back there.
And just a reminder, I forgot to at the start of the meeting, just remind that all cell phones, please be silent. At this time, I forgot at the beginning of the meeting. Let me silence all cell phones, please. And then also I had just a reminder when we have either a staff member or somebody who is maybe not appear to the podium that you agree or disagree on, please do not talk and be with all that person that's at the microphone. This has happened time and time again, and you're not in a you know, where people can't hear you. So please do not disrespect my staff or other members that are up at the podium. That is very rude and I will not tolerate it near the wall of council tonight. You will get the gavel and we'll ask you to leave because it was very rude last time that our staff member was called a liar and bewildled by she was speaking and we're not going to allow that. So thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go first with the opposition of speakers who raised their hand.
May I?
Oh, wait, you gotta go. I'm missing all that tonight. I think I'm new on the job.
I will be very, very brief, but I do want to cover. We do also have Michelle and Vanessa available from Placeworks. If you have a technical question that I am not able to address. They are both extremely skilled at housing policy where it's kind of a focus.
Mr. Mayor, do we, the next item on the agenda.
I skip it.
Is do we know how many people are here for that item on the agenda? So they don't have to wait to the whole. They know. Okay, I'm just, I just hate for them to wait to.
Oh, it's the high school. Yes, they don't. They were made aware.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
We have.
Sorry.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, please. Yeah, yeah. Let me know if we have somebody raise their hand on Zoom as well.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's a thanks reminder. Yeah. So we made them aware and they're going to get a learn how our city council works tonight, our high school students and our speakers. So it'll be good for them, I guess. So Juliana is going to go first. I'm sorry, skipped right over her, our planning director. She's going to open up on our housing plan and then we will go to public comments. I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. I will keep it very brief because I believe this is about the fourth time, at least the last thirty days that we've presented on this. So just for everybody here, because you obviously weren't here for the other meetings. I just want to give kind of a brief overview of what the housing element is and why we're doing an update right now. So the housing element is part of our city's general plan. And so when we talk about an element, it's basically just a chapter that's focused on one specific topic area. So we are in a general plan update right now. So our next item that we're going to be focusing on after housing is safety and public health, and then we'll be moving to parks, transportation, different items like that. So please stay with us for the entire plan because we would like to hear from you. And so the housing element has special statutory requirements. And so we are required to update the housing element on a more frequent basis. And it has a lot of state required sections that we have to include, which is why it is a beautiful, wonderful couple hundred pages. It's to meet some of those state mandates. So we are right now preparing an update for our sixth six cycle that would basically plan out twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. And we are required to have an adopted element by February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, which is why we are here today recommending approval or denial, however you'd like to do that. So the housing element provides an assessment of both current and future housing needs for all income levels. It identifies opportunities and constraints on housing production. And these constraints are divided into governmental constraints, which are items that the city council can address with action. And it has non-governmental constraints. So the recession that occurred in two thousand and eight is considered a non-governmental constraint because there is nothing this body could have done to prevent that type of thing. So we look at those two different times, types of constraints. And then we establish goals, policies and programs to meet the housing need and identify these opportunities and constraints. And then ultimately update city policy, programs, regulations and procedures to reflect new state law. There are several hundred new housing laws since the last update. And so we had to do quite a bit of updates related to the Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen, Emergency and Transitional Housing Act of twenty nineteen. One of the large new required laws that we addressed with this document is the affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is an acronym called AFFH. So there's a full assessment in here that goes over that piece. But ultimately, we go through and we try to identify strategies and programs that focus on conserving and improving existing housing. So there's no reason to build new housing if you're not preserving your current units. So we do have programs recommended in here to do that. Maximizing housing opportunities throughout the community and so not focusing on a specific area of town only, but also providing programs throughout the entire city. Assisting in the provision of affordable housing, removing governmental and other constraints to the housing investment and promoting fair and equal housing opportunities. So there are some state mandated goals, policies and programs that are in there. We've indicated those with a small bear icon. And so those goals, policies and programs cannot be removed from this document. Otherwise, it will not be eligible for adoption and certification from the state. Now, there are also some optional programs that we developed in response to the public input that we received throughout the process. Excuse me. And so we started this process in October of twenty twenty-one where the city council hired Plan West Partners. I was not hired until November of twenty twenty-one to assist them with that as well as provide other planning support for other documents. So we had a community workshop on general housing needs that was open to the public on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. We had a general plan open house, which included activities on housing February nineteenth, April nineteenth. Excuse me. City council had an initial findings and public input workshop on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We conducted interviews with employers, housing advocates, realtors, developers in Rarica to collect input on housing needs between April and July of twenty twenty-two. We had an initial planning workshop on the first draft of the housing element on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. That first draft of the housing element was opened from July twentieth, twenty twenty-two through August thirtieth. We had a planning commission meeting in August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, where the planning commission voted three zero zero two to approve the draft. Two members were absent at the time, and so that's why we have a three zero zero two vote for that. The city council held a public hearing and voted five oh to approve the first draft August thirtieth. From there, we transmitted it to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or also known as HCD. And so there is a requirement for the state to have a review period of the draft for ninety days to make sure that it meets all the statutory requirements that returned to us on December twelfth of twenty twenty-two. And then we basically prepared edits to this document based off of those comments as well as public out public comments that we had received during that period. So this was presented to the planning commission on January eighteenth, and they voted unanimously five zero to approve the proposed final draft. So our public engagement throughout this process is we worked with outside agencies through direct outreach and email groups that includes the Continuum of Care, which is our organization at the county as well as with other counties that work on homelessness and the unhoused issues. We worked with Siskiyou County in a number of different departments to address housing need. Group Tribal Housing Authority, because they are located within the city and do provide housing for a subset of our community that we do need to plan for. We also posted our public events in the newspaper through social media, and we also have a general plan newsletter, which is open. You can go to Rarica General Plan twenty forty-four, which is our general plan website where we have all of our documentation as well as our newsletter signup. We made announcements at city meetings and we tried to hold as many workshops at regularly scheduled city meetings for people to participate. Information has also been available on our city website and the Rarica General Plan twenty forty-four. So just to briefly go over the recommendations. So what we heard from the general public in terms of housing needs, so that includes members of the public who also took our visioning survey. So we had about two hundred and eighty-four people take our visioning survey that we had launched for several months in twenty twenty-two. That survey is still open. If people are interested to take it, it does ask a number of different questions on other areas of the general plan that would inform us on future goals, policies and programs of the other elements. But what we heard concerning housing was that we need to provide additional support to all housing programs. That includes making our permit processing more efficient, making things more cost effective on the city side. Providing support for people who are experiencing poor rental properties. So we have condemned approximately eighteen housing units within the city since I've been here that are just subpar living conditions. All of those are rentals. Zoning code was listed as a major constraint to not only our developers, but our property owners throughout the city have issued concern over some of the housing code regulations. A lot of people would like to see workforce housing. And so workforce housing is in direct response to our need to provide housing for our employers. So we heard from the casino, which is also adding the new hotel development, Norcal, which is now Pfeiffer, which is also doing an expansion. And then several other employers throughout the city who participated in our interviews as well as our general input have listed that they are having issues hiring people. And the biggest issue that they state is housing is they don't have anywhere to put them when they hire them. And so workforce housing is not affordable housing. Workforce housing is at all income levels. And so moderate income individuals in Rarica are making approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to fifty-six thousand dollars. So those people would be eligible for these programs and which would be eligible for housing grants in the future that are being made available through California to stimulate housing development. One of the other things that we saw within our housing needs assessment data as well as input that we've received from the general public is that we need more small scale, single story housing for our older residents who would like to move out of their larger homes into a more manageable situation. And for our and or for our residents who are experiencing disabilities, we have.
Give us for a second. I do have one seat down here. For the late with the cane. If you want to come take a seat here. You're welcome.
So going back. Yeah, sorry about that. So just to bring this back, we do have a larger portion of our population, a little bit more than thirteen percent of our population overall is experiencing a disability of some kind that is registered under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so their housing units do need to be adjusted for them. So there's several ways that we can do that. And so we heard that the single story smaller scale would be helpful for a number of different residents in those two different demographics. Again, as I listed before with workforce housing, our housing has become an economic development issue. So we're going to have difficulty attracting other businesses or helping our business expand within the community if we do not address our housing issue. One of the other items that came up, which I've talked about before, that is directly from public input we received is is a program called adaptive reuse. And what this does is it allows us to take underutilized or vacant commercial buildings similar to the ShopCo building and redevelop those properties as either mixed use, commercial and residential uses, or to develop that into a residential use as a whole. And we also heard a lot of input from other studies ongoing at the same time that's asked for more housing in the historic downtown area to look at the housing on the second story and why we're not filling those units to allow for the adaptive reuse of those entities. That also includes allowing more flexible zoning codes to allow for ADA units on the first floor of commercial areas, which are not currently allowed. One of the other things we noticed with our zoning code is that there is a loophole in the zoning code right now that allows you to develop high density residential in single family zoning or our low density residential zoning, and that's with a planned development zone. And so that has occurred several times in the last couple of years. And so if you look at our zoning map, there are pockets of R three within the R one. And so that would adjust with some of our recommendations here. So the other thing that we're doing is updating regulations to meet state requirements, which isn't as fun as the other stuff. And improving housing information and the availability of housing information for a variety of different residents. So there are a number of programs at the state level that are available now for property owners who would like to, for example, install an accessory dwelling unit on their property for a long-term rental or to house one of their family members at their property. So those are some of the key approaches that we took. So the summary of changes from August until now is that we have added four programs that are all state mandated to the document. And so those are in relation to water sewer connections, which would basically what it does is it would require the city to adopt a policy where we would not discriminate against people or housing units connecting to city sewer and water if they so choose. If they're an affordable unit, some cities have used this as a way to keep of what we call low income housing units on septic systems that may be more prone to failure. And so we already have this policy in place. It's just not in writing. Basically, which is if you would like to connect to city services and they are available to you, you may do so. We do not currently require. We do not currently require anyone to connect to our water service if they do not want to. And we do have a municipal code section that requires sewer connections if you're within a certain number of feet of a sewer main line. One of the other things is that the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance is not up to date. And so we do need to do some updates to that. That was an added program from August. The other one is streamlined ministerial approval, which is compliance to Senate Bill 35, which requires us to have a permitting process that is universal to all different types of planning processes as well as offering quicker review of certain types of low income developments as they come in. We do not have a significant amount of developments that come in, so we've never had to really prioritize one or the other. And we don't estimate that it would cause any issues with, you know, moderate or above moderate income housing units coming in. One of the final programs we had to add is the city has the definition of a family in its zoning code. And we either need to update that definition or remove that definition. Our current definition is not in compliance with 1973 or 74 California Supreme Court law. Basically, we just don't want the government getting involved in defining what family is. And so we typically recommend removing that from your zoning code. So seven programs have additionally been revised. They are all state mandated programs. And it's just to make sure that the language meets the statutory requirement. And then we provided additional analysis of housing needs in the appendices and in the AFFH assessment. And then finally, we added the stakeholder interview input as a new appendix based off of a request from the general public and from the state of California. So since we introduced the final draft in January, we have made just a couple minor changes based off of changes at the state. And so those are reflected in the most recent version that was released January 31st, 2023, that is in the packets for tonight for approval. Table 2-1 has been updated to list all 17 state mandated programs that have a bear icon for easier reading. We have revised program 1.3.6. So this is actually, I wanted to cover this one as well because there was confusion in this program and this is the Article 34 program. So this program would basically, this is kind of what, this was a question that a council member brought up to me prior to this meeting. That did not make it into the attachment that's in your document. So our or of the California State Constitution requires the general electorate to vote in favor or against rent control. So it basically allows you as a local jurisdiction to vote that in or vote, right now it is prohibited. So you may put it on the ballot now and vote in favor of it or against it and put it to the general electorate. It costs money to do that. And so people don't really know this, but we spend anywhere from $10,000 to $68,000 to put a ballot initiative on a ballot. And so what this program does is it first, it advocates to have the state put this on the ballot for the greater state to vote on whether they would like to reinstitute rent control as an option. So we made an amendment to this program because the state has since ruled that it will put this on the general election ballot of 2028. So we amended the timing of this to read November 2028 instead of November 2024. So if it fails at the 2028 general election ballot, what this program does is it recommends or has the city initiate one final ballot measure on the local ballot for the general populace of YRica to vote whether they would like rent control or not. So it's just giving the option of being able to vote that in or vote that out and allow that to go to the the voters on that piece. So that was amended to now read 2028 general election ballot. So the other revision as of January 31st is Program 7.2.1 subsection 5, which actually is again another program I was going to bring up tonight because there's some misinformation going around. So there is only one program in the housing element that even mentions the residential agriculture and the residential, low density residential or R1 zone. And this is a state mandated program. It's a 7.2.1.
Thank you.
Should be page 2-3.
Yeah, 22.
Yep. So there is, this is the only section that mentions single family residential and residential agriculture. And what this is, is group homes operating as a single family residence that provides licensable services to more than six residents is subject to a conditional use permit, which includes public hearings. We did have to amend this to meet state code that the conditional use permit findings must be subjective. And so that that is going to be amended for for this section. Those are the only two changes in programs as of January 31st, 2023. And that is the only program that speaks to changing anything in R1 or RA. And so what that means is if someone is running a group home and has six or more people, they are required to get a conditional use permit. We are required to publicly notice that. And there is a public hearing that the public may come to at the planning commission level. So that is the only program in this document that touches the R1 or RA. Every other mention of zoning in here is the high density zone, which is our R2 and R3. And then commercial zoning and opening up more availability of commercial zoning to housing developments. One of the other things that was mentioned that I want to clear up is rezoning. So we are mandated by the state within two years of approving a new housing element, we must update our zoning code to become current. And so what we proposed in here is two optional programs that would require the city to notify all property owners within the city, at least twice of the proposed zoning changes. So the first letter that you would get in this optional program is you would get a letter notifying you that we are going to be doing a rezoning of the entire city. We would then identify what available zones are available to your property based off of the general plan. And then we would ask your input. There would be a second letter sent later in the process stating this is what was assigned to your property as a draft. Here is when the public hearings are and where to send your public comments. And so we are not required to do that by law. What we've heard from people is that we've had a number of rezoning requests throughout the city because people didn't know that they were rezoned as a whole in 2004. So what we wanted to do was add those programs so that people are noticed and people have adequate time to participate in the upcoming rezoning. Now, this document does not rezone the city. That will happen at a later time. And so that will be part of the land use element discussion and a general or the zoning code update. And that will occur later this calendar year. We do have a grant application out to help us pay for that aspect. And so we won't even hear if we'll get that funding until the mid, mid year. And so there are two programs in there and that's what it commits the city to do is to notify property owners about that process. So this is not committing anybody to be rezoned. That will be part of the land use element much later in this process. And just wanted to kind of clear that up because I have had some people ask thinking they're going to get rezoned tonight. You are not. There is no proposal on the floor to do that. So basically, at this point, we are not able to really make any huge changes to the program's goals or policies. We're kind of at a yes or no stage for the city council. We have to have an adopted version to the state by February 15th. And we are required to notice the draft that you're deciding on at least seven days in advance. And so that's why we posted on January 31st with the version that is in your packets that's available online. And so at this point, if we make any changes tonight, we would then have to renotice tomorrow for a decision on February 15th. And so we would not be able to really have enough time to transmit that final adopted version to HCD in time. You would have to have your final approval decision prior to the end of the workday. And so it would make it very difficult for members of the public to attend that. So at this point, that's pretty much all I wanted to kind of state for tonight and make sure everybody is kind of informed on the same page and adjust some of the issues that have been going around, around what's in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana. I'm just going to read the fiscal impact because you did cover the first two portions of the agenda item.
The treasure to read.
Want me to read it? Do you want to read it? Fiscal impact, the most, most of the federal and state agencies require assurances or certificates of compliance on the state housing element being current. Failure to maintain an updated housing element would be reportable to the Department of Water Resources, Department of Toxic Substances, California Housing and Community Development, CalFire, CalOES, Caltrans and federal agencies of head, USDA, the EPA, the EDA, the US Forest Service, FEMA, the city has an active pending and planned loan and grant applications. With all these agencies, that total over $75 million. So before I go to public, I'm going to ask if our city manager, Mr. Ledbetter, do you want to go now after Juliana, or would you want to go after public comment?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is the city manager, Jason Ledbetter, and my preference would be after a public comment.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm gonna, before we go to public comment, I'm gonna, with the council's okay, Mr. O'Brien, who is our chairman for the Planning Commission, wanted to speak first of some misrepresentations that have been made against our Planning Commission. So I'm gonna let him speak if that's okay first. Okay. Good evening, Mr. O'Brien. How are you?
Good evening. My name is Peter O'Brien and I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. At the last meeting of the Planning Commission, which was several weeks ago, we, the Planning Commission had the same measure as, as you've been talking about, the housing. And we passed that by a vote of five to zero. Apparently, there has been some accusations that the the Planning Commission was pressured into passing that vote. Well, I can say that in my knowledge, there was no pressure applied from anyone. The individual members of the commission independently passed the voting and it was five to zero. There was no skulduggery involved. Another question, another accusation was that the Planning Commission didn't have sufficient time. Well, I think as Juliana has already explained, this has been going on for over a year. So we've had lots and lots of time and lots and lots of documents to read. I've spent months and weeks and hours, endless hours, reading this, this documentation. So the fact that we don't have sufficient time is ludicrous. So both these accusations, I think, are groundless and misleading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to go to public comment and I'm going to ask the parties that raised their hand that are in opposition to line up. So we're going to have to play some shuffle. You will have public comment. When we, when I, you have that opportunity, please. Okay, so the people in opposition, I'm going to ask for them to line up first and so we might have to, if they're getting up to speak, you might as well go ahead and take their seat and then we'll rotate around a little bit. I'm not ready for you, sir. I'll call on you in one minute, please. I will call on you in one second, please. If we can get everybody to rotate around. Like I said, please, please take the seats if it's too crowded up there.
Mayor Middleton.
Yes.
Time for you.
And we'll have three minutes on the clock. I just want all the commotion to settle down when you speak so we can hear you. Okay, go ahead and you will have three minutes on the clock.
Jack Phillips, Mount Shasta. I'm actually not going to read what I wrote for this meeting. I see there's a lot of people here. The first thing I'd like to address, Mayor, is if you have all the people speak in opposition first, which I oppose, then you just hear one point of view and I think we need to hear one for and then one against. And that would give people the chance to hear the other side and then maybe I, you know, maybe I could be changed. I don't know. Yeah, I don't think so. I I won't be changed on Article 34, which I think you should remove it from the housing element. Rent control and government subsidized housing is a very complex issue. And when you just say Article 34 is to prevent rent control, it's not that simple. It's a very complicated issue. Article 34 basically just gives the property owners the right to vote against having rent control and low income housing imposed in their neighborhood. But it's so much more complicated than that because you can look at the city of Santa Monica, which they call the Republic of Santa Monica. Because those people literally, I worked there most of my life. They literally had rent control imposed upon them. And if you can imagine being a landlord and the government just comes in and says, hey, you can only pay $400 a month. You can only charge $400 a month for an apartment. And when I was young, I literally went into an apartment building in Santa Monica and remodeled it. And I couldn't believe it. I told the contractors, what are we doing? We're going into apartment building and we're remodeling an apartment. And he goes, you don't understand. This is rent control. They don't maintain the buildings. So we're going to go in there and we're going to remodel it. And this gal that was going to get it was only going to pay $400 a month. Now, mind, keep in mind, this was in 1982. A long time ago, but still, that's what happens under rent control. A lot of people don't maintain their property. But again, I'm not going to read what I, what I wrote tonight. But if we could hear one for and one against, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to my city council and ask what they would, they would like to do. I'll go to Councilman Davis. Would you want to go every other? Okay, Baker?
Yes.
Wait, it is. Wait, what? Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter to me. Okay. You want to do that, then maybe line up on opposite sides to where you can do that because you have another fight.
Sorry, that's not my thing. Oh, that's a good idea. Oh, yeah, we do. Sure. And we do have a mic on this side as well. So
Yes, we do.
It doesn't matter. But no podium, exactly. So. Okay. I don't know if he was opposed or, or, but it doesn't matter. Good Louise will call. That was a 34. Okay. But not the housing plan. Okay. Okay, come on up.
I'm gonna go for.
Okay. Thank you, Donary.
We really need housing really badly. And we need to find a way to get them. So if a grant is the way to get there, we'll do that. We'll do whatever we gotta do to make more housing. Because of all the fires that have been around us, we have gained 2,000 or more people in this city who are living with wherever they can, including up on that hill. Because I know five families, families that are there because they cannot find a place to live in this city. Because there are no homes. We need housing terribly bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Donary. Next. Remember to state your name and your.
My name is Beverly Harlan. I live in Mount Shasta. And I just found out like 10 days ago about this, what's happening here. I just want to say a few things. I support. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
I support eliminating all the elements in the housing plan except those that are mandated by the state. I support local control of zoning for land use and housing. Upzoning should be property owner's choice and not a government mandate. Most people have their life savings in their homes. They buy a single family homes in neighborhoods with the understanding that there will not be a change in land use upzoning, allowing multi-story buildings or high density developments. This is a retroactive assault on those owning their single family homes and I'm and appreciating the low density and semi rural lifestyle. Some of you may not know that our current YRica Planning Director, Ms. Julianne Lucchese, was previously the Mount Shasta Planning Director.
It's irrelevant. Thank you. Relevant. Move on. No, we're not going to have her. No, we're not gonna have her, that's stated, that's slanderous. I did, no, it's slanderous and accusation.
Actually, it's not slander.
Yes.
Accusation. Um, this, I can.
Skip that part.
She wrote, I mean, is that slander?
Slander. Don, I'll call our attorney into Don Hennion. Don? Is Don up there? Don?
I mean, if it.
There we go.
I don't really care if they do or not.
They slander you?
No, that's fine. I mean, that's on them. It's me, like, I mean, I just.
To this discussion of this item, we will hear. If it's talking about something that's happened.
Supposed to be related.
That's not our purview.
Exactly.
Uh, if, if, uh, they've been taken up with that, with that person supervisor at that time. Because that's, that's, will be considered a, uh.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Mr. Hennion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor?
We have a, um, speaker who would like to comment on accusations against our planning director at a previous position, uh, previous position. Um, that could be slanderous of that.
Well, these.
Anyways, let her speak, or no? Excuse me, excuse me, order. Next time you're out, you will not yell at me from the boat out there. You will not tolerate this. One more outburst, there's the door, I'm gonna gavel you. Mr. Hennion?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you hear my question?
I, I heard it as far as you got with it. Um, apparently, you're more aware of what the allegations are than I am. So I'm not exactly sure what she's gonna say, but I'm getting the impression that it has to do with, um, Juliana's previous service um, to another city, um, and that seems to be irrelevant to this proceeding. Um, and I can understand why the, um, mayor wouldn't feel that that's, um, something within your subject matter jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Hennion, so if you could skip over the part of our planning director and stick to the housing element that you're opposed to. We'll let you continue.
Um, well, I guess I could say, um, so we had a Zoom meeting on April twenty-twenty-first regarding the housing element. Um, and there were a hundred people on a Zoom call. They were all concerned because they had found out that that, um.
I don't think so. Is this our housing element? Not the city of Mount Shasta?
Councilmember McCoy, can you bring, um, put your microphone on if you're speaking? Councilmember McCoy, I believe, was, um, making some statements.
I think I already said this, I support eliminating all the elements in the housing plan except those that are mandated by the state. That's a big one. Um, all of us must take the time to investigate proposals and plans that relate to our own personal and community interests. If we do not, we may find suddenly that our most treasured values have been usurped by laws that do not favor us, the constituents. Some of you may not realize that or believe me when I tell you that there is a powerful and concerted national effort being lodged against small towns and rural areas to make them undesirable to live in, and thus to force those residents to move to large cities. The true goals of this effort start to become more clear whenever you see these words being continually repeated. Sustainability, social justice, social equity, environmental justice, resilience, racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, et cetera. Had any of you ever heard of these words used in the context of planning prior to ten years ago? Does anyone even know what they mean? Such words and concepts have been created to advance an agenda that does not serve the best interest of most of humanity. They do serve the calculated and orchestrated plans of people and powerful positions of our government and business. During the flood of emails that were circulating among concerned Mount Shasta residents during April twenty-twenty-one, one resident had this to say about that situation, which sounds very similar to what we have going on right now in Waireka.
Time, thank you. Next speaker.
You all. I'll take advantage of being right here, um, next to the microphone, Jonathan Andrews, presidency, CEO, Fairchild Medical Center. First God, uh, on behalf of all of us at Fairchild, I want to thank the city council and the staff for all your work on our behalf, this community. Um, my position is not going to be complicated. Everything we do at Fairchild Medical Center is through the lens of making sure that you have access to care when you need it. We've worked very hard, um, in recent years to make sure that when you need us the most, we're there for you. The number one factor for me right now in terms of making sure that you have access to healthcare is workforce. And the workforce situation in healthcare is at a critical level in terms of the shortage from provider staffing down to licensed staffing, nurse, nurses, physical therapists, the unlicensed staff, um, we are really struggling to recruit and retain workforce. Within that equation, probably the number one thing on that list is housing, having options to find a place to live. When I try and get them to come to this area, and I spend a lot of my time with recruitment and retention efforts. Some might say, well, just use some of the existing housing. Two years ago, we purchased a duplex over on Terry Street. I wanted to be able to accommodate some of our physicians on a temporary basis. I gave notice to the tenants and realized that one of my key IT staff members was renting one side of the duplex. And so I evicted one of my staff members to accommodate another. We need a new housing supply, and we need it now. And I am not exaggerating when I say, given the situation with workforce, and what I'm trying to do with access, no housing means restricted access to you when you need healthcare services. So we, uh, we're, we're fully committed to making sure we're there for you, but I gotta have an additional supply of housing to recruit and retain the workforce. It's necessary to make that happen.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Louise Blyato. I live in Waireka, and I'm gonna be reading some of these to you, because when I get in front of an audience, because I'm old, I forget my words, so. I'm requesting that the city council eliminate all elements in the housing plan that are not required by the state law, especially HE one-point-three-point-six, which would require the city, and this is, and this is the key word, require the city to support and actively lobby for the repeal of Article thirty-four of the state constitution. Article thirty-four requires new low-rant housing projects that are developed, constructed, or acquired by public bodies, be authorized, and it has to be authorized by a public vote. I'm not opposed to more affordable rent or housing. In fact, I strongly support more housing. I am, however, opposed to the goals of city planners and state unelected agencies whose agenda is to eliminate present and future single-family neighborhoods in California. I'm particularly concerned about the practice of upzoning, which should be a property owner's choice, not a government mandate. And I have to preface this next, um, this next paragraph, because I was at the Planning Commission meeting the last time when they voted. And I also, so that I wanted to make sure that I remembered what I had heard, I actually went back and looked at the U2 and saw it again to make sure that my facts are correct. So here's what I have to say about what happened at the Planning Commission meeting. Our two new planning commissioners and our two new city council members did not have adequate time to read, study, and research over two hundred pages of these very technical housing elements, let alone understand enough to ask informed questions. January was the first meeting that the two new planning commissioners, who were sworn in only in December, hardly had enough time to comprehend this massive technical document. The Planning Commission chairman admitted he had not read the entire housing document yet. Only one question was asked at this meeting, then they all voted to approve it. I was disappointed and shocked. Waireka has been advised that we are required to comply with the state housing elements. The lack of compliance will be reportable to the following agencies, and I would, um, would mention that the mayor has already mentioned them, but I'd like the public to hear, and again, the agencies we have to report to. The California Water Resource Department, the Department of, Department of Toxic Substances, California Housing and Community Development, CalFire, CalRES, CalTran, HUD, USDA, EPA, EDA, USFS, and FEMA. We are threatened that if we fail to comply, then the city's active pending and planned loan and grant applications will, with all these agencies, will likely be denied. There are seventeen elements in the housing plan which are California mandates.
Time, thank you. I'll go here first.
For or against? Go for it.
Three minutes on the clock, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Danielle Claire. I am the head of HR for the West Coast at Pfeiffer Vacuum Valves and Engineering, formerly known as Norcal Products. I'm here speaking on behalf of our general manager, Brian Straight, who would have been here tonight if he wasn't traveling on business. We are requesting your vote in favor of the additional housing proposal. Pfeiffer Vacuum Valves and Engineering is the second-largest employer, private employer, in Waireka with two-hundred-and-eighty-seven positions, including contingent workers. We are forecasting a revenue growth that represents a hundred-and-thirteen percent over the last five years. In order to support this growth, we currently occupy three buildings with planned multimillion-dollar expansion investments in twenty-twenty-three and additional multimillion-dollar investments in twenty-twenty-four. In an effort to support our business growth, we will need highly skilled trade workers, particularly in machining and welding. We currently have a robust system of training and developing locals who enter the workforce as entry-level labors to a career of journeyman-level experts. Out of sixty-five machinists and welders, fifty-eight of them have been trained and developed in the city of Waireka. We continue a partnership with the college with resources and materials to aid in the education of the trades. However, this is not enough. We must recruit and relocate additional experts in the fields, including engineers, who allow us the capacity to meet customer demands and serve as additional trainers and mentors to develop our local workers to the level required to meet our revenue goals. In twenty-twenty-two, we were able to secure accepted employment offers of two welders and one machinist. However, during the post offer process, all three backed out when they were unable to obtain housing. We supported them by offering them temporary housing and facilitated contracts within our contacts within our network for housing leads. Those contacts were unable to provide any confidence that they would be able to establish housing in a reasonable time. As a result, we lost those candidates. We are in a housing crisis in Waireka, which is directly and negatively impacting our business and our own locals from opportunities of growth and mentorship of outside expertise. Labor is in high demand and low supply. As a company, we are creative and methodical in our approach to be an employer of choice. But these efforts will fall in vain without the support of the city to approve housing that is critical in our endeavors. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to a continued partnership with the city of Waireka to address the needs of the community, as we all benefit from the success of Pfeiffer Vacuum Valves and Engineering.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Good evening. Name's Mason McCoy. First off, I'd like to say that I do agree, we need more housing, it's just how we're going about it, is what I disagree with. I sat down to read the two-hundred-and-forty-three pages of the Housing Element Update. Didn't take long before my brain started going numb.
Trying to clap.
You can hide a lot of crap in a document like that. I looked at the list of stakeholders the city interviewed. It appears most everyone interviewed are people who profit from city council voting the housing element in. One group I did not see on the list is the one-family homeowner. By far, the largest stakeholder acted by this issue. I also feel that any member of the city council who is in a position to profit from passage of this housing element should recuse themselves from voting on it. There are a number of elements that are state law, and there's nothing can be done about those. I urge you to both know, on the remaining elements, this is our city. Please keep it, control of, of our city right here in this building. Don't let a bunch of unelected bureaucrats get their foot in the door. They don't give a rip what citizens of Waireka want or need. It's their agenda that's important to them. And I have some pamphlets I'd like to pass out on Agenda Twenty-One. I know when Agenda Twenty-One is mentioned, people start seeing tinfoil hats. But it is real, and you're out stepping it. I'd like to.
Thank you. Next, thank you.
Uh, my name is Michael Norland. Um, I'm from Waireka. Uh, short-term, been here three years, love the place. Um, I see all around people that are looking. God, been there, looking for, or vice versa. I understand the need. Um, they're such a short time, short time, I will defer to the majority of the people as how, how it's gonna be handled, because you have for a lot longer. One thing I would like to ask, is I understand that there are for auxiliary dwelling units, that there are plans for, for houses that are pre-engineered and pre-approved. I've heard that there are modular homes that are already pre-approved and pre-engineered. Um, and what I would like to ask is, I have no idea how to access the information even to see if property, I believe I have room for another one. That would be more on, I don't have to move. And and help the town and some people that actually need the house. I, I would be more than willing to do so, but I do need to be able to. I usually need to know the size of some of the modular homes, just so that I can look at the layout. I have a house and a shop on my property. I need to make sure I can even have the room just oriented, that's next, secondary accounts. So if that can be, let's say streamlined, but if there's a way that that could be gotten out or work to be put out, if this is where they have the information. All right, thank you.
And sir, do you live in the Waireka city limits?
Yes.
Within our city limits? Okay, we can either have Juliana give you her telephone number or the city manager's number, they'd be, um, the ones that will guide you on the plans and, um, criteria, that would be. That would be have to be met for that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you so much. She's gonna get you a card, so don't leave, don't leave yet. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jessica Potter and I am a legal document preparer in the city of Wyrika. My job is mainly evictions and I oppose that rent control agenda in there. I have not read that document and that is my fault. I am not an attorney, I cannot provide legal advice. My office is not a law firm and I do not represent people. I have single-handedly watched what landlords are going through though. And a lot of people don't know, if you do have a rental, please look up Tenet Protection Act of two thousand and nineteen, which does put in rent control on multi-unit dwellings, AB fourteen eighty-two, as it is also known. So there is some protection for those tenants. Also, I'm a little amazed at the people who think that people are going to want to come here and work here and live next to communities where it is subsidized. You know, the doctor is not going to want to work next to their patients and live there, right? I grew up in low income housing my whole life. I would never want to live next to that again, and I don't want my kids to live next to that. I don't oppose it, but I do not support the lifestyles that come along with that. And I'm a little concerned that we care more about grants money and the people that can get us the grant money than the people who are creating and have maintained this community. So I think our our views are a little bit off there. But I would love to, if you ever have questions regarding what I'm seeing in evictions, as they are the majority of my work, I'm more than happy to to talk to anyone that has questions. So that's what I have to.
Thank you, thank you. One thing I will address real quick is because I think some of these shots are being taken against me is I will not be recusing myself from this agenda item. I did seek the advice of our attorney and look at their lawyer. And I am not required to recuse myself, so I wanted to get that out of the way. There's been a comment made and we received an email. Person's not here tonight in case she's listening. And but we did email her and let her know that I will not be recusing myself from the vote and I'm not required. So thank you. All five of us will be recusing ourselves. Anyways, thank you, next speaker.
I'm after my affection with nothing. It's an interesting evening because I find myself for the first time on the other side of the fence with people that are friends, with people that I highly respect. And that's okay. We can have our differences. There's a need in the city for housing. I don't disagree with anything that we're saying because they bring up valid questions. But the point is, we need to take care of the housing issue here and the homeless and having housing. One thing that I know for sure is this. I told one of our council members, probably not that long ago, I said, we need to start to pray for you. Really, we have an outstanding council, I'm not just saying that, we really do. We opened up a homeless shelter at our church. And the one person that called in the next morning and said, can I come down and wash the dishes, if there is any, is our city manager. That's pretty good. I want you to know that we might not agree with everything, but we're praying for you and we love you. It's okay to have disagreements. This is what it's all about right here. But we have a real need to come together and we're praying for you every day. Who we are and what we are, I think everyone probably agrees, is not predicated on whether you're Democrat or Republican. We find ourselves, just like myself here this evening, stepping on the other side with people I love and know pretty sharp. But I feel this with a passion. We need to move forward with this. And by the way, if you have any problems sleeping at night, grab ahold of that two hundred pages, start reading.
Amen. I did. I sleep like a babe.
Thank you for the privilege of being able to open up our church. The county's been fantastic, the city, the chief, he sends an officer down there. We haven't had any problems. And those homeless people have been so gracious and so calming. It just really touches my heart.
Thank you.
That happens to be someone's uncle, someone's sister, someone's brother. And we need to show them love. But I understand both sides of this. Let's do it right, but let's give our people a chance in government. I really mean this sincerely, pray for them, that's the best thing we can do.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Pastor. Next speaker.
I'm Sally McCoy, I'm a resident of Wyrika. Have owned a home here. Three of my bullet points have already been talked about, Article thirty-four of the California State Constitution and the zoning laws and people wanting more local control over big government. So I'll just read my last two. Concerning the fourteen stakeholder interviews, I didn't see one interview that represented my designation, single family homeowner. I heard about this project three weeks ago. I realize it's my fault for neglecting city council meetings or checking the agenda. Is there any possibility a newsletter similar to what we get with our water bill could be sent out once a month to citizens of Wyrika? It's just a, just an idea that some of us senior citizens, after dinner, we sit down on our couch and watch TV. I know that's not right, but that's the reason that I've only known about this for three weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we are putting a committee together to redress the issues of the more public outreach to our citizens. So we will be addressing, possibly doing that, so. Thank you. Colleen's gonna be heading it. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah, my name is David Lloyd, my wife and I have lived here for ten years and we like it a lot. But we would never consider ourselves locals, that would be a little rude, I think. We don't know what you have been through. Everything I've heard people say here tells me that you are all interested in solving this problem of housing. So that is very encouraging to me. But I would like to remind you of something that I hear from people who've lived here all their lives, that maybe because you've lived here all your lives, you you're forgetting. And that is simply that although life is good here, life used to be fantastic here. I've been told that there was no better place than Wyrika on a Saturday night to have a good time. And that was when logging, am I, am I correct about that? Yes, I think so. And you know, I love spotted owl as much as the next liberal, but I've also lived in towns where logging is very important. And we know firsthand that logging is the second most dangerous job in the world. And so you lost that, not as Councilman Davis suggested, a slippery slope. The trapdoor opened and down you went. And I think if you're concerned about slippery slopes now, it's very, very understandable. But I would like to suggest that you've got a city council who you can trust. Well, I'm hearing that, that is mainly the difference that you have here. You want what they want, but you don't trust that they're gonna do it right without being criminals or without gaining millions of dollars or whatever it is that you might suspect. I think your your city manager and Ms. Luchesi, they've done their due diligence to find you a ladder up the slippery slope and back to good times. Logging is never coming back. You know that. Those were great days, but it's not coming back. But you've got companies here that want to bring people in, that want to raise your economy. And you can do it. And your city council, I believe, wants to do it on Northern California terms, your terms. And so I suggest you trust them because they've done their due diligence. It is a knockout document, it will put you to sleep as fast as you can imagine. But that's their job, that's their job to do that document and not fall asleep. Okay, so I think, have I made myself clear? All right, done, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, thank you.
Hello, my name's Diane Collier and I was asked to read this by Norm Shaski. And then afterwards, hopefully I still have a few minutes to, or seconds. It's not very long. Council members, I urge you to delete all, and I don't have my reading glasses on, so bear with me. Computer like, all sections of the housing element that are not required by California state law. Failure to delete sections that are not required will result in a loss of local control from the city of Wyrika. I have experienced the loss of local control in my prior elected positions as a community college trustee and as a council member and mayor for Mountain View, California. Once local control is lost, it is gone forever, amen. I released that, I realized that the city has a deadline very soon. In the future, additional items can be added as necessary. This draft has too many changes to enact all at once. That's his comment. I am in agreement with everything else that I am opposed to what is in there right now. I do agree that we need to, with norms eliminating the elements that are not required to stay mandated. And as I, when I was nineteen several years ago, I played in every bar in the county, so I can tell you, it was a good time. Had to go outside when I wasn't singing though. So, um, but you know, it's again, the the element, the discussion isn't about whether we need housing. That's clear, we do. The problem is how we get there and the wolf we let in our door and sheets clothing. And this is riddled, riddled with it. That's why I am strongly passionately opposed to how it's written. You get rid of these elements and you don't open that door so we can be all bamboozled and taken advantage of. And I like to remind you that once you do have low income housing, I don't want it riddled across the city. I don't want to like find out somebody's gonna take their nice open lot and then put two houses on it because they can. I mean, this is, we came up here for the wide open spaces. We don't want a high density and cluttered, what is Wyrika gonna be? And yeah, I, you know, these companies are like, yeah, we need housing. Well, yeah, you sure do. I worked at NorCal when they paid eight dollars an hour and wanted me to bring in two million. So a month. So I understand what they need. At the same time, we can't, we can't just like throw caution to the wind and just accept it. Oh, we got a deadline, by God, if we don't get it, because that's how we're gonna get in trouble. I really don't care if we miss a deadline, honestly, I don't. I would rather see us do it correctly and keep our our community safe. And some of the other issues, when you have low income housing, I hear something about a trust in here where our water rates, we'll be subsidizing the low income for water bills and my bill already makes me angry. And all I do is flush my toilet. So I have no kids living at home, it's the highest water rate. I tell people in cities how high my water rate is and they, they choke and I choke. And God forbid I water my yard every other day or every two days a week in the summertime, that's crazy. And then you've got the the power bill that goes along with these buildings that are low income housing. Guess who pays that? We get subsidized, we pay it. It goes on my power bill.
Time, thank you.
So we're paying and then you gotta maintain.
Time, thank you. Assistant City Manager, how many minutes are we at for speaking? No, total already? Are we gonna be losing? Oh, do we lose track, okay? It's okay. Hi, thank you.
Good evening, Reverend Lori Kaiser Boswell, co-pastor of Mount Zion Lutheran since nineteen ninety-seven. At that point, my husband and our tiny child moved here. A year later, we purchased a home, last year we paid off the mortgage. I had a little left on the HELOC and it's all ours. I know this is tough stuff. I first of all, want to apologize to the planning commission and the board and all who did the work that I'm coming in at the eleventh hour. That's on me. I don't track, I should, I should track better. I can blame it on lack of communication from your part, but I gotta own it. I haven't been paying attention. I spoke to somebody and they were concerned. And I said, I've gotta be here. I do not have a problem with low income housing being right next to me. I don't see a reason to create ghettos in our town. I want all my neighbors to be here. And I'm not gonna ask anyone here to have the same piety or spirituality as me. But when I read this and I read the concern and the the hopes that it would create more affordable housing and low income affordable housing. I worked as a social worker for a while, working with homeless folks. I was supposed to overcome their barriers to housing. You know what their barriers were? There was no housing. So after a few weeks of sheltering them, I had to kick them back out on the street. That broke my heart. I left that good paying job because I couldn't handle it anymore. We need a plan. I haven't read it all, I tried. My brain couldn't digest it all, but I know you worked hard on it and I'm like, thank you for that. And I'm going to trust you with that. And back to my own piety, when I think about this, I can't help but quote scripture. And I'm not gonna quote it all, I'm gonna paraphrase it. In Matthew twenty-five, it's reported that Jesus said, whatever you fail to do for the least of these, you fail to do for me. And with that, I can't help but say, please vote this in, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My my name is Steve Neal and I live here in Wyrika. I understand the need for affordable housing for the for the homeless for the employees of businesses that want to move here and existing businesses that want to expand. However, I don't think that accommodating these needs should be at the expense of the owners of single family homes. I think some of the proposed sections of the housing element could have the effect of reducing property values in neighborhoods of single family homes. For example, accessory dwelling units are allowed in this, in the city now. So why do we want to promote them, as stated in section five point one of this housing element? An occasional accessory dwelling unit or ADU, as we all call them, in a neighborhood may not have a significant impact. But if a city promotes these ADUs, initiates a program to facilitate and accelerate their development, applies for state funds to support their development and allows movable tiny houses as ADUs, all of which are included in section five of this housing element, then there could be an abundance of ADUs in the future. If you live in a single, in a neighborhood of single family homes, would you like an ADU on possibly every lot? Can you imagine how this increase in density could change the neighborhood? More traffic, more pedestrians and bicycles, more noise, more lights, more cars parking on the street? This has the potential to change the characteristics of a neighborhood in a significant way. The state is not requiring this and the city already allows AUDs, ADUs. Therefore, section five may not be necessary. And I think it would be in the city's best interest, best long-term interest to delete it from the housing element. I'm also concerned about the many sections of the housing element that would allow by right development. Some of this is required by the state. But does the city truly want to allow by right development and have less control over future development when it's not required by the state? Is this in the best long-term interest of the city? It seems like this could result in lower quality developments and could have a negative impact on our city in the long run. There is a need to address how these housing issues in Wyrika. I think we all agree on that. But I hope it can be done in a reasonable, logical and sensible way that truly helps the people that we want to help and not adversely affect our existing neighborhoods, our quality of life and the reason many of us choose to live here. Maybe scrutinizing some elements in more detail and considering adoption of them on an individual basis is a solution. This would mean not adopting the entire housing element at this time. But it could result in a better plan and a better city in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gita Lloyd. I moved here almost ten years ago. And I do own a single family residence now because we love it here and we could buy. And I also found out at the last meeting that I am one of those. I am a low income. I I found out there's now new categories, low income, lower income and lowest or whatever it was. I be, I am, I am living on just my senior, you know, mittens that I got. And I'm just, you know, I am one of those, if you wanna look at someone, it's me. But I'm a good neighbor, I can tell you that. And I do love our home, so. I understand not wanting to be around those people. I did move into this area. And worked for two and a half years as an AmeriCorps worker. So I got to meet and actually help several people uh, get a home. And they were able to pay their rent for three and a half years now. I'm really happy for that because they were living in a tent. That had rats and holes in it and it was about to be winter. And local people, my friends and I did a thing and we got her a RV and she's. Living now normally. But go meet some of these people. They're not as terrifying as, as you might think they are. And I actually don't think you'd lose the quality of your neighborhoods in such a rushed manner. I think they'll stay away from those communities because you're not building them. Uh, it, it won't happen if you can in everywhere all at once. But I am very afraid of a corporation that has enough money to move away quickly. Uh, I've worked for the largest corporations in the world. I'm an internationally published illustrator. So I get a little nervous talking about it. So you've all colored in coloring books and I am a professional coloring book illustrator for Disney. For Clifford the Big Red Dog. So um. I'm just saying. Though I'm very poor, I come from a wealthy background. I know wealthy people. I am dressed in my traditional costume. I'm an artist. And we mix and mingle it with enthusiasm everyone together. So please. Don't let these. Major corporations that can leave. You know, go down. Just do this thing. It's not a, a rushed decision. You've worked on it so long, do it. And I appreciate it. I'm sorry I get nervous.
Thank you so much. You did great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Please.
I'm gonna go here first.
Good evening. My name is Tom O'Gorman. I used to live in town. I now live south of town. I started in low income housing myself. Low income housing, yes, we need it, but we need it in the appropriate places. Um, this appears to me that it gives the uh, local governing body, you. Too much uh, flexibility with zoning and municipal ordinances. To allow substandard housing into neighborhoods that have somewhat of a standard. So we do need it, but we can't allow. ADUs and everything else to spill over into our neighborhoods, into all the neighborhoods. So it needs to be focused. We have a lack of housing. It's not that we have a lack of land to build houses on. I do work in construction. How many permits do you have out there for seven hundred to eleven hundred square foot, single family homes? I would willing to bet. Zero. Yeah. Because. With cost of buildings, you can't afford to do it. And in this, this is talking about subsidizing. The uh, developers to develop these properties. And. To burden people who want to build a new home outright with some of that expense. So we already have no houses being built. And we would ensure that by adding more taxes to it or fees. The low income housing is not going to house the people. I presume that's an opinion. That come in for Fairchild Medical Center. And most likely not the people coming in with the former NorCal products. If the city would look at focusing the, the low income housing in specific areas. Where it's more conducive. To the neighbors and to the residents of those facilities, I think it'd be in their best interest. But also maybe look at lessening some of the burden on new home builders. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Erica Alvarez and I am the Shelter Manager for Youth Empowerment Siskus. Um, I got into this field because I'm passionate about the people that I provide services for. Um, and because I fully believe in being a good neighbor. Um, that's how I was raised when I was, when I grew up in this county. And that's why I always admired and loved most about being a small town. Um, we shouldn't be afraid to help our community members. Helping them is making our community thrive. Nobody should have to earn housing, food, clothing or other basic needs. All of those things are a basic human right. The city has an opportunity to adopt the housing element to become eligible. For assistance that is available. We should take advantage of our resources. That are given to us to improve our community. Adopting the housing element will eventually help people that are in the greatest need of our support. They are here. They are not a problem, but rather a population needing a good neighbor. We need to grow our resources for our people and build our community. This is what Waireca is lacking, resources for our people. The county is growing, but Waireca is not going with it. We need to continue to come together and get the resources people need to be stable and taken care of. No one deserves to be out in the cold, hungry and in need. When the city, by adopting the housing element, will be on the path to create opportunities for change and resources for our community member.
Yeah. Thank you.
Speaker, please.
Steve Young, Waireca. You sold me my house.
Yes, I did. A long time ago. How long I've been in business?
Housing is not fair. It's a business transaction with a bank. And just because you don't have it, doesn't mean you can move into my neighborhood. Now let me tell you before you get all upset. There are a lot of people moved out of LA County. They moved up to Palmdale, California, working for Lockheed. And it's a ghetto now. It's an absolute ghetto. Get on your computers. You'll see it's a ghetto what happened to it. Because they opened it up for low income and low income and working folks couldn't work together. Now, I'm not saying you don't need something, but you gotta work at it. I got it. I came from just living in my, my mom's garage. Out you go, you know, and I built myself up thanks to my wife. If it weren't for my wife, I would be living over by uh, behavioral health too. But uh, parking is an issue. We haven't talked about a lot about parking. Glendale, California parking, if you take up on the street more than six inches, you're a parking hog and you'll get a car damage. There is no parking there. Any new housing that goes in has to provide its own parking. So you want to do how income, you have to have all these cars off the street and under the house. Or you put a, a triplex in my neighborhood, there goes twenty-four parking spots and I take up four of them. How dare you? But anyway, uh, in LA city. We build car elevators, high dollar car elevators. Drive in, takes you up, messes you around. That's the only reason how they can develop those buildings. Cause they have to provide their own parking inside the perimeter of the building structure. Please understand parking will be a big issue. Big issue. Now, I'm saying like was said before, we got lots of areas out here. Move the Grenada. Grenada's a nice place. Oh, now they got a great church out there. It's just great. You know, they got a good fire department. They're just, just great, you know? And you can still come into Waireca. I moved to Waireca and I, eighty percent of my work is in LA city, East Side Skid Row. Yeah, that's a drive time, but I do it. Why? Cause I love living here. And my neighbors, when I moved in, they all moved out. I got all new neighbors, five new neighbors. Yeah, I'm quite a neighbor. It's neighborly guy. But anyway, consider the parking. And consider if, if we're going to be forced in it by the state and the state is all knowing all, you know, we got a great governor, don't we? Uh, he's going to do it. Move. Work the districts. Don't just take a, an existing housing unit. And start throwing in. I see dirt lots around here. You start putting in triplexes or a, or a quadplex. Hey lady, you're supposed to take your phone off. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh. Let's see people. Okay, thank you.
Um, just a point of order. Things might move um, more quickly if we held the applause till the end.
Speaker wants you to, so I'm not the bad person over the night always. She wants to hold applause to the end. How'd you like that? Thank you. Thank you. Next, next speaker. You hear me? No.
All right, thank you. So my name is Sean Cazaretti. I've lived in Waireca for twenty years. I came here from San Jose. And um, when my employer tried to bring me back to San Jose, I said, sure. And um, I was talking to a couple of guys. I'm guys making between two hundred fifty and ten hundred thousand dollars a year. So pay me enough that I can live eight minutes from work in a house big enough for my two giant dogs and my three kids. There was silence. The quality of life we have here is precious and we need to understand that. We need to be very cognizant of it. That being said. The only way that your house value goes up is if somebody else wants. And the only way to get people in here that want a house is to employ them. Retirees don't buy big houses. They don't pay a lot for houses. They want a small house. One that you put in your backyard where your parents. That's about it. It seems pretty simple and straightforward to me. I don't understand what the crisis is about. I've lived around poor people all my life. They're not fat. A lot of them are pretty nice. Some of them give poor people a really bad day. Some rich people give rich people a really bad day. It seems like we're arguing over stereotypes. Let's do what's good for the economy. Let's do what's good for the city and then move on. We can make good decisions along the way. I don't see a reason to stop here. I think we should support this event.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Lori Williamson Dixon. I live in Waireca. I lived here since I was fifteen. Um, I love Waireca. It's. Open spaces. It's rural. It's wonderful. Um, I think what we're losing sight of here is the big picture. What's the big picture? Why is every community across the nation facing the same problem that we are? We're talking about Agenda Twenty-One. What is Agenda Twenty-One? Well, I encourage you to read the book Behind the Green Mask by Rosa Corey. It explains a lot. Anytime that you see these planning departments that come up with all of these plans that have a bunch of acronyms. You can bet it's part of Agenda Twenty-One. Why? Because they want to make it a headache to look into it. Why? So you don't look into it. See, just put it on through and don't even worry about it. But the truth is, it's about control. It's about controlling people, controlling the property that they own, controlling how much property they own. They want to make every city in America crappy. And is this really about adding a couple of apartment complexes to Waireca? No, that's not what this is about. It's much bigger than that. It's about making us comply with a global plan implemented locally. That's what this kind of a plan is about. I'm asking. And a lot of people are asking that you only adopt that which is mandated by the state and not the extras. Why is it that I can't have a tiny house with a large plot of land? Why can I not have that? I can add one to my existing property, but I can't just get a tiny house and live on a piece of land, big land. Why can't I do that? Cause they don't want you to own private property. That's what it's really about. I encourage you to read that book, Behind the Green Mask by Rosa Corey. It's all hidden under a. Oh, let's make it walkable. You, you know, we're not going to have any more nice traffic in Waireca. That's going to go away. Cause they're going to make driving crappier so that you stay home so that to ride your bike instead of ride a car. Anyway, my point is it's a global plan implemented locally and that's what they're trying to do here. That's why we have a problem with it. Cause we deserve private property and we deserve rights on our private property. That's all I have to say.
Sorry, I tried. Sorry, you're the mayor. I'm on the um.
Again, hold your pause until after we're done. Thank you. Guys, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, I'm just gonna pull down the mic.
Can we help her pull down?
No, that's all right. I'm used to being short. I've been short my entire life. Okay, um, my name is Yolanda. Actually, I'm going to give you my full name because there's a part of this talk that I want to say. My full name is Beatrice Yolanda Garcia O'Brien. I moved here in two thousand eight. Yes, I married the O'Brien. I'm not Irish. Okay, and I want you to know that we bought. A single residence property on the most unique street in Waireca. Our side is zoned one. The other side is zone two. It's one block long. I love that street and I like the people on both sides. Low income, I am considered low income because I'm retired. Though when I worked, I was not low income. I do want to take that extra housing unit that I have on my property and develop it because of a son with a disability. And it would be perfect for him. Okay, the other thing I want to comment, I got comment, you know, we heard phrases like social justice. If you truly know what it is, I took a semester course from Loyola University in it. It isn't there as a communist or a global. Undertaking. It's there to support the very people that we are. We have basic rights, housing, food, shelter, safety. Happiness, eh, that's up to you. That's social justice. Also. Other comments that were made. Waireca is the only city that I have experienced the least racism. Because of my Mexican-American background. But I have experienced it here, but nothing like I did in the city I was born, Los Angeles. In the town that I lived in, Lancaster. Okay, and in the town that I moved from, Glendale. I hope the gentleman understands that I've lived in all the areas that have changed. But they changed because of growth. Because people were being employed. People were moving in. People were coming in from other countries. People were immigrating. So that they could enjoy the benefits that this government could give them. People immigrated because their lands were being torn apart by war. Are we so against these immigrants? Are we so against our people of color? That we would deny them housing just because they're low income? Low income is very working class. Is there something wrong with the working class? I hope not, because all of you have worked, I'm going to assume. And if I make the wrong assumption, I'm sorry. But the majority of us have worked, have retired, have earned that retirement. I've earned this gray hair. And I just want to say, we need housing. I don't really care about Agenda Twenty-One. Hey? Because I know where that's coming from. I do believe in globalism. Yes, we need to work together to help each other. Because we're all human beings and we're all connected. And God asked us to help the least of those. So if you don't want to help the least of those, then I ask you. Please. Don't interfere with those who want to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Juliana, give me a bear. People outside the door yelling and talking. I think there's been distraction. Next speaker, please. Okay, that's all right.
I enjoy LA and I don't have some big long say, except that I think we're all a lot closer to being one of those people. Um, that we like to admit and so. I enjoy LA and I don't have some big long say, except that I think we're all a lot closer to being one of those people than we like to admit. And so I am strongly, strongly.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Consuelo Mendita, and I had no plan to speak until just now. Um, my Lord is Jesus Christ. And yes, he says, if you have done it for the least of us, you have done it for me. And I believe that 100%. But I don't think it is right for the corporations, they have, they're greedy and they have a lot of money to come and use and take and abuse what the, what God said to do for their own benefit. We have to do it. Yes, I agree. I mean, my son and I, we lived in a low-income housing and it was devastating. What goes on in those places and the way they run and who gets rich and who gets a tax break because they're called low income is the big corporations. While in the meantime, the people that we were renting for, we were being raised in, in limited in any way you can think of. So like I said, my Lord is Jesus. And yes, I'm all for, for everybody to have housing. And I don't think we need to use their race. And I have the right to say that because I'm Mexican and I have suffered racism. But I don't, I don't accuse falsely on people that have not done it for, for a globalist to play, to play the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker.
There we go. It's on. Okay, my name is Bertha Salazar and I've lived in Way Rika for almost 50 years. And I don't have a lot to say except for I am for housing. I think that it will benefit our community in so many ways. I have the opportunity to members of Sacramento who are very spirited because that's and I just want, I want to agree with the lady before the other. I am also Mexican, so there's three of us in a row. I, I just want to say that I do appreciate the better living that we enjoy here in Way Rika, but it's really short sighted to think that we can continue the way we are going. We need citizens to come in. We need to have a, be a location where our children will stay here, because they have a place to live and a place to work. And so I'm very much for this and I hope that you will consider or think about. Not everyone has what you have. There are so many people that are praying for what we have. I want to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Bertha. Get into the road?
Hi, I'm Tracy Lima. I'm a resident here in Way Rika.
That's not for you.
I'm a quick speaker too. Okay. I won't even be three minutes. I am Yolanda's neighbor.
Yes, you are.
I am on the worst street in Way Rika FYI that nobody needs. Yes, the worst street or the structure because it has probably the most potholes in this entire city, which you'll hear from me always around that. Yes, but what I would like to say is I too am living in the place where we have the different zones. And one thing I'd like to say is well done, young lady on that plan. I work in government. And oh my gosh, the amount of work you people have put into that plan is amazing, whether you like it or you don't like it. I am impressed by the nature of the way in which you followed your rules and regulations of putting a plan together. As somebody that knows how to put plans together, I can appreciate the fact of what you've done. Um, I think that our city, I don't think, I know, I have lived here the last, gosh, I don't know, almost 20 years, little, maybe more than 20 years at this point. Um, we need housing. We need housing here. I have people on my street that are dealing drugs. I have people on my street that are driving so fast on my little tiny street that they hit a car and flip it up on the sidewalk. Those people aren't living there. I mean, they, we need housing. Doesn't matter who, what your income is of where you live. If you're willing to work and you can afford to live somewhere, then you should be able to live somewhere as opposed to on the hill, in the dirt, across from behavioral health. If you're willing to make something of yourself and we can get some affordable housing here along with whatever the rules are that are going to come along with that, because there are rules that come along with everything, then people deserve to have a right to be somewhere. And I just want to say as a resident, I'm proud of the work that you folks are doing. I don't always agree with everything that you do, but I'm really proud of the work. I voted for several of you sitting here and I'm pleased and proud of what you're doing. So I encourage you to listen to what everybody has to say, those things especially that are grounded in reality. I think it's important to listen to and to make your vote in the way in which you need to. But I, as a resident of Way Rika for the last 20 years, I'm in support of giving that authority to you folks that I voted into office to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had a few support in a row, so, but I'll go ahead. It sounds like maybe I'm right. So my name is Sarah Collard and I am the Director of Helping Human Services for the county. And as others before me who have spoken to the workforce issues, I, you know, we have about 250 employees in our agency. And like Jonathan at the hospital, we, you know, provide safety net services for the community and from our front desk people to our managers. We are really struggling to attract people to the county. And there are several people recently that we have offered positions to and they have come and not been able to attain housing. So there are many workforce challenges at the moment, but certainly housing for everyone who works for us is hugely challenging. And I'd also like to just speak briefly to the fire victim issue. Our agency is very engaged in, you know, helping victims of fires get into housing. And, you know, we spend years, we are still working with Slater Fire Victims, McKinney Fire, you know, any fire that's happened in the last several years. And the same issue is true for them, right? There is just no housing. And so regardless of the population we're working with or our own employees, housing is just a barrier to, to everything that we do. And like Tracy, I just want to say, Juliana, I'm so impressed with, with your work on the plan and the work of the city staff. And I really urge you to vote yes on the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Hi, Donna Batsch Galuppi. And I, my residence is a little Shasta, but as the city council knows, I do own property in Way Rika. So first of all, I'd like to read the last paragraph that Louise didn't get to finish reading. And it says, there are 17 elements in the housing plan which are California mandates. I strongly urge you to eliminate those elements that are not specifically mandated. Approving the elements mandated by the state is not optional. The other elements are not mandates and could be reviewed for adoption at a later date. It makes no sense to adopt these limits to our local, local control until our representatives and community have had time to review, review them separately and completely. Then I would like to address something that Corey said. I'm the person who brought up the perceived possible conflict of interest. And the reason I did that was because not only are these elements backed by the California Real Estate Association, we have three real estate people, agents on our planning commission. All the stakeholders, except one, were either real estate people, developers, or property managers. And I felt that Corey should think about that in the fact that he might want to recuse himself. Excuse me, I've had this frog in my throat all day. He might want to recuse himself in the big picture of the whole thing. So it's, it's, that's why I suggested that, because it is a perceived conflict of interest. Okay, back to, I'm not sure how the conversation got to low-income housing or racism. That wasn't where this was going at all. It was control out of our city in Sacramento and Washington DC. I think that we, we have those 17 mandated elements, but I think too, we should stop and look at the rest of them. Why should we give up our local control? Has nothing to do, as far as I'm concerned, with low-income housing. This is a big county. We could put a apartment house just outside the city limits. They, what, it's a five-minute drive? So to say that all this has to be squeezed in to how big is our city doesn't really track in my mind. So I'm not sure how we got to this, we're against low income or we're against, we're against race, we're talking racism. I just don't know how we got off track in all this. Has to do with those extra elements that are in that, that we have not had a chance to really see how it works for our city. And that's what we'd like time to study more. So pass the 17 and let's look at the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, Donna, as I did check with the attorneys and I do not recuse myself, I am quite aware when I do have to recuse myself from an agenda item. Yep, yep. It's a financial gang. So if a developer did come to me and I was involved with that developer, I would have to recuse myself. But right now, it's not even, we don't even have developers even passing this. We hope so. If it passes, we don't know. They might not even come here. Thank you. Good.
Good evening, Council. My name is Madeline Bryan and I work as the Housing Coordinator for Siskiyou County. And I just wanted to say that what I see in this document is that the, the elements and goals would allow for increased opportunities for the city to partner with community organizations and with the county. And I think that those partnerships and collaborations will be much more effective in addressing the housing needs of the community. And without this document being passed and being in compliance, it will limit the partnerships that are available to the county and Way Rika and community organizations. So I encourage you to consider that. And I also want to share my pulse on housing. As the Housing Coordinator, I frequently receive calls from community members and organizations, uh, you know, discussing their concerns with housing. And I see a need for housing across all income levels in Way Rika, including people like myself. I commute about 70 minutes every day to work here. And there are limited options for someone like myself who would be interested in moving to Way Rika. And, um, and the kind of concerns that I hear from people on the phone are more about seeing homelessness. What I have not had anyone call and complain to me about is low-income housing. And we do currently have low-income housing in the area and nobody calls to complain to me about that. What I, what I think that people are much more frustrated about the impact of homelessness on the, uh, really the moral fiber even of our community and the character of our community. So any, uh, any programs that encourage the development of more housing, um, I would encourage you to support.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, it's not working? Don Marie is our professional over that mic. What's going on?
Hello, I'm Ben Villegas. I moved here in 2002 and this is the only high school I ever attended. My son goes to YHS and he is a freshman now. If I can't, I'm in a position to buy a home, but everything is above $400,000. And there is nothing unless, other than these dilapidated homes that are under $200,000, but you got to have another $200,000 to build it. And there is no housing. I look out into this crowd and I see a young professional that went to YHS. He has his masters. I befriended him because he's my best, my little brother's best friend. He went to school away from here. I went to Humboldt. I came back. My son is here. My family is here. I plan on being here. And you guys are all quoting the Bible. I'd like to remind you of El Padre Westro. Make heaven on earth. It says so on there. I don't know the name of the prayer because I pray in Spanish. But you have to build it up. Just because all you guys got an opportunity to buy homes in the 90s, we did too. My dad bought near his, his aunts in the Shasta Valley. We live out there. I have a home out there. I live in an apartment here in town. I am in a position to buy a home, but I have to buy something that is pretty near a mansion. And all I need is two bedrooms. It's me, my girlfriend, fiance, and my son. And there is not a single home listed right now. I've been in the market for two years now. And I have not found anything that is what I am looking for. So I don't have many options other than to hold it out and wait to see where Way Rika goes in these next four years. But my son keeps saying Florida. I keep saying Texas. There is a lot of places that people go that have the same values and mentalities. I believe in the state of Jefferson. World War II interrupted it. It should have happened. It didn't. You guys are still holding on to some values. The state is pressuring you. California seceded from Mexico because they wanted to have self-rule. Now we don't answer to Mexico City. That is right down the coast. We answer to DC. That is way over there. And California is in Sacramento, but it doesn't hold any of our interests. I am for small business. I own a video and photography business. I work with nonprofits. I work with small businesses. I work with everybody that wanted to video the Historical Society, the Franco-American Hotel. I have a trade that is desirable and MCTV-15. I don't even know if it's on the air. But if it is, you'll see my programs when I study here. I was here for four years. I know these subjects. They're on my YouTube channel, water rights, housing, homelessness, outreach for 12-step programs. There are religious groups that have the same thing. That is not the county or state. And they are willing to help. They need more resources. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Might want to come over to the podium. Might be faster. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Quentin Gaddy. I am the Director of Business Development for Siskiyou Economic Development. More importantly, I grew up here. Uh, my parents raised me on Nap Street in a single-family home. Councilman McCoy was my middle school principal. I bought my Little League glove from Drake Davis, uh, on Minor Street with money that I made from a paper route Siskiyou Daily News. So I have very much vested interests in this community. When I graduated high school in 2011, the unemployment rate was above 16%. So if you can guess what I did, I got out. So did most of my classmates. Many of us left. Most of us didn't come back. If you're to ask me, how many of my classmates have a mortgage in the city of Way Rika? Can't answer that. Because there are none. That's a problem because what if we want to raise our families here? We wanted to come back. I, when I was 17, I was 18, I wanted to get the heck out. Okay, I, I, I had my fill. But as I got older, I kind of realized that there's something magical about it here. And that's why my parents wanted to raise me and my siblings here. It's very much a place that's designed for, for young families to grow up in, in, in a good world. And right now, they're inhibited from, from doing that. Part of the reason is, is that lack of housing stock, something like, is it 39.7% of single-family homes in the city are occupied by empty nesters? And so what's going to happen is there's going to be a demographic time bomb that, because there's such a big gap in the workforce and there are so many people in the aging population that are going to require more services, whether it be in healthcare, whether it be in home services, uh, even getting like a server at a restaurant. Um, so in my role as Director of Business Development, I work with over 100 businesses in Siskiyou County this, this last year. Everything from tiny little mom and pop shops with two or three employees all the way to some of our largest employers. And right now, the employment picture is completely different than it was when I graduated high school. 360-something jobs are open in the county right now in Siskiyou Works. Okay. Timber Products for Machinists right now is offering a $4,000 sign-on bonus. And they're going, they're trying to recruit people from out to come in to fill these roles and they can't because people will take these roles and they can't find housing. It's the same problem with teachers the school districts are facing. It's the same problem with my medium, small-size enterprises who are at a really, really prime phase of their business where they could grow and they can scale, but they can't find the workers to do it. So what we need to really be focusing on is that workforce housing where young people like me can buy it. And you know, it's not your dream home. It's a starter home. It's something where you can build some equity and you can build some wealth and you can build further prosperity in the community. Because what happens if we all age out is the amount of business creation is going to dwindle. The amount of employees are going to be able to provide those, uh, uh, fill those roles is going to dwindle and we're going to have a decay. And we're going to have a decay and and this crunch period for ten to twenty years until what a a a bunch of people die out and then housing stock is open again. This can be a very, very awkward time. Thank you very much.
All right, I am Amanda Harris. And at the risk of not being redundant, I will just say I agree with everything that Quentin just said. The only thing I will change is that I was around here when Mr. McCoy was still a teacher. So yeah, so I am speaking to you, the council tonight, as someone who was born and raised in Wairika. My family was here. I still remember stories of my aunt having to come to city council meetings as I believe it was a clerk. Growing up, my family is very, very invested in Wairika. And like I said, I will echo everything that Quentin is saying. There's two key things that I want to say. Number one. Council McCoy had mentioned in a previous time when I was here, the fact that I am one of those success stories of kids that came back. And the unfortunate thing is that it is so incredibly rare. Nobody my age wants to come back here and it's because there is no housing. Even the kids that want to come back. I had a friend that was here earlier and she had to leave and she said, she's like, at this point, I'm pretty much waiting for someone to die so I can buy a house. It's and that's the horrible truth of it. And the thing is, is also what I would really like the council to think about. Not everybody who graduates here. And again, I'm talking about this as someone from Siskiyou County, from Wairika. I did leave and thankfully came back. I got lucky. But not everybody grows up and gets married and has kids and has dual income and can afford these homes that are here that those are the types of demographics that we're going to be helping. It's not and I will say I was so disappointed and I know that we didn't mean to go there, but I really was so disappointed in some of the rhetoric tonight. And how prejudiced it was. It's not those people. It is people like me. I am single. I am not married. I am a professional in Wairika. I am the type of people that you would be helping with this. It's not drug dealers. It's not all of these different things that we've heard tonight. There is a professional, a young professional group out here that wants to come back desperately, that wants to grow this town, that wants to see better for it. And we can't. We can't. They simply can't. And so these are a lot of my friends that are out there. So I'm kind of speaking on that behalf tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, thank you, Council. My name is Alia Roca Ezra.
I want to speak up a little bit because your mask.
Yes, I will speak up. Thank you, Juliana, and all of the staff that worked on the housing element. I'm here to say that I've been working in Wairika since I graduated from college a year and a half ago, and I spent three months trying to find housing in Wairika. Before I started working here, I reached out to ten, around ten property owners and was denied from all of the housing I applied to because of the huge number of people that were also looking at the same time as me. So I ended up looking for housing in Ashland and I work the or or I don't, I work here. But I live there and I spend most of my money there. And I know people who are in a similar position as me. They live in Ashland and work in Wairika. So I just want to say, I think everyone who wants to live in Wairika should be able to, and I am in support of more housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tamara Braden. I'm the resident of Siskiyou County and I live here in Wairika. I know all about low income housing. I raised five kids as a single mom in this community. And now that my kids are grown and gone out of the house, I am attending a first time buyers homeowner seminar this weekend because I'd like to purchase a piece of property. It's my American dream, right? So I I can't disagree with any of the people here who have stated the positive reasons why we need more housing in our community. We want to bring in more people, more employment opportunities and all these things. But what we haven't talked about are the the elements regarding group homes. And I don't know if anybody is has heard of any of the problems that some communities are having now with these fast track group homes that are being put in. And if this housing element goes through, it becomes a by right to put group homes in your neighborhood. So just type into your search engine computer, community outrage at a group home moving in and you'll find that these these communities are finding out on short note notice that the corporation has bought an older home in their community and revamped it and filled it with early release prisoners, potentially pedophiles or sex offenders or violent criminals. They're minimal security. These people are on ankle monitors, but there's no like restrictions. So it falls on local law enforcement to to make sure that our communities are still safe with these early released prisoners in group homes. So my kids play outside when they were little. I have grandkids that I want to be able to play outside in their single family home communities. I I don't think that fast tracking group homes in in our communities is necessarily a beneficial thing for any of us, including people in low income pack and stack apartments. So I think that's worth considering. And that's why I think it's really important that we slow the roll a little bit and look at each one of these elements and take take a closer look at how it might impact the long term health of our communities. I appreciate all your time and hard work and thanks for everybody for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Yuki. My name is Chris Taylor. I am a business owner, a native resident of Siskiyou County. And I am in support of anything that brings more housing into into the community. And I'm going to speak a little personally about my experience with housing. I had an opportunity to buy a house at one point and it fell through through some really sad circumstances and became a resident of an RV for three years. And let me tell you, it's horrible living. Especially when you have children. I just recently had the opportunity to move into an apartment that became available. Thankfully, it's a very nice apartment. It took many, many years slash months trying to find a decent place that I could afford. Not only do I own my own business, but I also work full time for the tribe. So and and I still couldn't afford a lot of the housing that's available out there. It's not really available. The amount of rent and the amount of deposit is astronomical, especially for a single parent. I say this. You know, I don't have anything prepared obviously, but one thing I want to really warn the community about is please don't micro focus on things. There's a lot in those in this paperwork that you can pick apart. But try to find the things that benefit us as a community. We have, you can think of low income, but I'm low income and I give to this community quite frequently. So I would like you to keep that in mind when you're when we're looking at stereotypes and buzzwords and grouping people together. We need to think of us, think of our community as a whole. I have worked closely because of all the events and things that I put on for the community and for my business. I've worked closely with the city. I have a lot of faith in the city employees that are here now, especially. I have not seen once where they are doing anything that would that would harm our community. I don't see why. I just don't see it happening where they plunk a a group home or a apartment building or low income facility in the middle of a residential area. It may happen. I don't know. That's not my purview, but I don't see it happening. I've seen these this community. Excuse me, the city employees doing nothing but bending over backwards. I'm trying to make our city better. They've had to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and then we're going to take, oh, is there people online? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I'll take us, I'm going to take a seven minute recess. Before we go back into public comment. Or return to session now so we can have everybody silent, please. Three minutes on the clock. All right. You're up.
This is on. My name is Jenny O'Gorman. I've lived in and out of the city off and on all my life since I've been here. I just wanted to say that this issue is not about housing. I think we can agree we need housing. The issue is, why did most of your immigrants, why did they come to America? Why did my ancestors come to America? It's for our freedoms and our right. This document will give up your freedom and your right to decide what goes on in your community. I urge you to reject this the way it's written, except for state mandated elements. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Patricia Lord and I'm the Executive Director of the Siskiyou County Arts Council. I want to thank the council for all their hard work on this issue. I know it's not easy to sit through some very comments that are being made. I want to internalize the point you asked. Acknowledge at the beginning is not to repeat, so I'm going to cover just a few things that I haven't heard anyone mention yet. I've heard a few people mention that they would like all of the non-mandated elements of this removed and to just pass mandated elements. I think what I would say about that is if we do that, then the only thing that remains in this plan are the state imposed perspectives. All of the local perspectives are reflected best in those elements that are not mandated by the state. And I also want to say that removing them and continuously stalling on making a decision about them is not the is not how you exercise local control. The lack of a plan is not local control and the inability to address or find solutions to things is not a local control is the demonstrative of local control. I also want to mention, I've been working in historic preservation and downtown revitalization for about seven years. A lot of people have come before the council today to ask you something. I want to come before the council today and offer you something. I will reiterate my offer to help incubate a Main Street organization for Wairika to actually do some of the grassroots community conversation and discussion that people sounds like people would have liked to have had before this meeting. We can help address some of these myths. Mis-truths or confusion about things through that Main Street organization. Oh, there was a woman here earlier. She had mentioned that every friend she mentions or talks about her water bill to people, friends or first that live in the city. They're shocked at how much everybody pays. I have one explanation for why people in cities pay less for their utilities than people in small rural areas. It's because of the population density of those cities. So if we want to see our utility bills go down, then we should adopt measures that help us increase the population density of the areas that we live in. There's another gentleman that was talking about new construction. I was really pleased to see an emphasis on historic preservation and rehabilitation adaptive reuse in the plan. For every million dollars spent in new construction, twenty six point five jobs are created. But that same million dollars for historic preservation creates thirty one point one jobs. So I'm really to see that in the plan. Thank you to that in. That is the end of my time. Maybe that's a zoom thing. Last point I will just make is median income for Siskiyou County is forty four thousand jobs or forty four thousand dollars. And Sacramento is almost double that.
Thank you.
My name is Bailey. I am a senior at YHS. I just started my last semester of high school. One of the things that I would like to put out there is the homeless, obviously part of the homeless situation here. I grew up here and over the years, I the homeless situation here has gotten so much worse. It's gotten worse and worse and it's just, it's crazy. It's just insane to see how like there are some people out there who can't do certain things because of certain reasons. And they need help. And I just turned eighteen and it's sad to say that I am one of the many, many youth out there experiencing homelessness. Yes, I currently have a stable household, but that's not always, sometimes I feel like that's not always going to happen for me. I even like when I lived with my parents. Homelessness has always been a thing. It's always been hard to find housing here and because people they either don't have it or that's way too high price for low income families like me and my family. Adopting the housing element will allow Wairika to help with that. And I encourage you to vote this in and not to let the different opinions of the public be the reason that an adult or better yet someone's child loses their life because they are starving and freezing on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is what it's all about. The next generation stepping up to the
Yes, thank you.
Whether you're what other side you're on, it doesn't matter. This is cool to see the next generation saying something. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go to I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I'm going to go to our online people. They've been waiting patiently to speak. So if we can go ahead and have I can't see. So the first caller who's wanting to speak. To like Jackie, Jackie Twiliger.
Yes, hi. I, everything I wanted to say has already been covered. I'm opposed to this completely, other than what you have to vote for. One of my reasons that I think I'll bring up is rent control. I've been a widow now for a couple of years. My kids have wanted me to rent my house and move south to where they live. And listening to the possibility of rent control, I would never even consider it. It costs the owners of homes that are landlords so much just to maintain. And if there was a cap put on what they could charge for rent, there's no cap on inflation. So I think that's something to consider. And I I just don't trust the government. I think it's a slippery slope. I trust your judgment much better for what we do locally and I think we should keep it locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Brian, are you there? Brian on the phone? Brian. Yep.
This is Brian Devlin. I'm a planning commissioner. And I just had a couple of thoughts watching the debate this afternoon or tonight. So number one, Commissioner O'Brien made a statement that I agree with one hundred percent that I was never contacted or pressured to vote one way or another regarding this housing element. So I want that to be part of the record. And then some of the, some of the comments I've heard are concerns were about ADUs popping up in the single family neighborhoods and creating or creating, creating undesirable housing. AB sixty eight was passed by the state of California in two thousand twenty one which allows for two or more AD units, ADU units on the property which is outside of this housing element. I don't believe that the housing element is promoting additional ADU building. And as a appraiser in the community, I don't see a lot of ADUs going in in our single family neighborhoods currently. The other concern I heard was you might get duplex or a triplex in your R one zone, single family home. Our current single family residential R one zoning allows for one to six units per acre. And that has to be approved by the Planning Commission and the city council. So there's no real change there. It's not a new element for that, for the housing element. So I'll keep my my comments brief. That's all I wanted to add and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Anybody else online? Okay, we're good. Okay.
Everyone, I'm Sarah Springfield. I'm the Executive Director of Youth Empowerment Siskiyou. I don't think I can speak to the youth housing crisis better than Bailey did. But I do want to emphasize that as the sole youth housing service provider in Siskiyou County, right? We currently have teens on our caseload in Wairika, age fifteen, who are sleeping in sheds. We currently have teens on our caseload in Wai Rika, age fifteen, who are sleeping in sheds, sleeping in cars, sleeping in tents, right? We have eighteen-year-olds who would be eligible to rent an apartment who are sleeping in tents, sleeping in cars, sleeping in outbuildings. We have twenty-year-olds, twenty-one-year-olds who are in full-time employed, who are sleeping in cars and sleeping in tents. Because we are unable, even with the supportive services from a provider, are unable to place them in housing because there is no housing available. I think, you know, some folks have said, you know, this isn't about housing and I have other issues with the plan, right? Everybody knows that we need housing. Honestly, I find that perspective irresponsible. This is about housing continuing to delay a decision on this. It's easy for us all to do when we're sitting here in this warm building while folks are out sleeping in the colds, right? Deadlines exist because we need forward progress. We needed forward progress on this years ago, when what, ten years ago, I think? In the development of the last general plan, we planned for no population growth. Think I heard one of that at one of the community meetings because they were, we were notified about public meetings. This is a process that has been going on for almost two years and it's time to make the decision. I know I went to the candidates forum at the wine bar during the election this year. And every council member who was up for election spoke about their decision-making ability and taking action on housing. This is the opportunity to do that. Tonight is the night. Please approve the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you.
Down Marriachry, I own here in Wai Rika, but I have one question.
Okay, we're done, right? Sorry, we can't allow, because we have to allow everybody to come back up.
Ask somebody else.
I'm going to close public comment.
Some of the programs that were mentioned.
Do you want to?
Yes.
Yeah, Juliana is going to speak and then we're going to go to Jason Ledbetter, who's been patiently waiting.
He's in Carlsbad on like a work vacation. He can All right, so just to clear a couple of things up that people brought up during this, I brought one up already. We do have a program to allow tiny houses within this on larger lots. And basically, it is an optional program because we did hear from people that wanted tiny house and other alternative housing options available to us. I can find that in here. That's program five point two point one. In addition to allowing tiny houses, what we did within this program is that we put in that when the city amends the zoning code, that it would not apply additional restrictions upon these that are not already required for other housing types. So that's on page two dash nineteen of your, your big, big books. And it's also in the agenda packet. I apologize, I don't have the page on top of my head. And so basically what that does is they would be required to connect to utilities the same. One of the changes is they are required to have either a temporary or a permanent tie-down. And that is actually an earthquake requirement in the California Building Code. We have been working with a couple of different housing individuals who are interested in doing this and trying to troubleshoot how to be able to do that in a temporary fashion. And it is doable. Basically, we put like a concrete anchor down and then we'll, we'll hook it in. The other thing too is it would also allow movable tiny homes without the tie-down at other places that allow manufactured homes and special occupancy parks, so like the RV parks, where actually a lot of people do currently live. And one of the other ones was the group homes. And so there are three programs in the element that discuss group homes, two of which are state mandated, so you cannot change. On two dash twenty-one of the booklet, program six point one point four is proposing to amend the zoning code to basically have group homes allowed by right in medium-density, high-density, commercial downtown and commercial highway zones as a by right to encourage those group homes to go closer to Highway Three where they're closer to services. And so that would actually encourage these types of developments to go into those areas where there are less regulatory restrictions and thus a lower cost. Speaking of cost, we do have a fee reduction program. Program two point one point two would not just apply to affordable housing units, but it would also go to workforce housing units and the definition of workforce housing would come back to this council to define. And so in some circumstances, we could work directly with an employer as workforce housing units where they would be allowed to have, you know, one or two of those units before their workers and establish those minimum percentages. But again, that would come back to the council for final definition and approval. And so we do have fee waivers in here. I think there's a confusion of by right development. You have by right development. So what by right development means is within every single zoning category, you have permitted uses and you have conditional uses. By right is the permitted uses. And so you as a collective city and ultimately the city council with zoning codes approves where you want things and where they're appropriate without additional permitting. And so currently you have that, so we're not establishing something new with that. It just, I wanted to clear that up. Thank you to Commissioner Devlin. So right now, yes, you are allowed by state law, any residential use regardless of zone is allowed one ADU and one junior ADU unit. In addition to those two ADU units, you may also engage in the density bonus law, which will get you an additional unit on your property. So in a sense, if you have a single-family home, you can turn that into a fourplex. If you utilize two different state laws and that's not even utilizing Senate Bill Nine, which also allows you to basically do a fourplex. We did actually use the newsletter in the utility bill twice over this whole process. And then we also mailed a postcard out to properties within the city to invite them to our open houses and to contribute to our visioning survey. And we did also send several other mailers. One thing to talk about, someone said that this opens up too much flexibility in the zoning code and that's on purpose because that's what people requested of us and that includes property owners, not just developers. We get that call quite often. In terms of, do we have any seven hundred to eleven hundred square foot homes? No, but that is an issue people said exists. And so we are trying to allow for that and promote that type of development. In terms of housing, we currently have the fifty-unit Siskiyou Crossroads in construction. And we have three homes that we've approved this year for construction. In addition to those units that we've approved, we have three ADUs and on one project. And then we have two other ADUs that are currently in the building process. And that's just from myself offering that to people. And so that's why we included a program to allow property owners to know what they can do about their property. And again, kind of, thank you for bringing up that we actually are trying to give people more property rights and flexibility with that. Going back to program one point three point six, which is the article thirty-four, I just want to bring up for the general public, something that you may not be aware of. Colleen may be the only person who's very aware of this state code. Section fifty-four ninety-six four of the government code, any officer, employee, or consultant of a local agency may not expend or authorize the expenditures of any funds of a local agency to support or oppose the approval or rejection of a ballot measure. So that means I am not authorized to spend my city time to advocate in favor or against a ballot measure. So again, going back to the article thirty-four, this is just to put it on the ballot so the voters can vote on it. That's all that does. The city is not allowed to even send an email about it because we purchased that email software using city funds. And so there is court cases around that that found that that city was an error for even using Microsoft Office subscriptions for that. So we are not allowed to spend any time or money on this, working as a city employee. Now, if I am a personal resident of the city, I may advocate for that in my off time. I am not a resident of your city and I would not do that. So I did bring this up to the council member who posed the question on Article thirty-four. If the state puts it on the ballot, you vote no. If the local initiative does not pass, this program is satisfied. We're done. That's it. That's all we're advocating for in that program is to give people the opportunity to weigh in whether they would like to do it or not. That's it. So one of the other things I wanted to point out, again, there is only one program related to your low density and your residential agriculture. And that is a state mandated one that requires the conditional use permit for group homes of six or more people. And so one of the things I want to point out, all of the references to zoning code amendments, by right, things like that, that are not state mandated, is to focus larger-scale development or higher-density development in the R-three or commercial zones, which are closer to services that are on Highway Three and basically Oregon Street and pretty much focus that in those areas. And so one of the things I brought up earlier and want to explain to people, when we do a zoning code update, when we get to that point, we don't just look at what people want to do. We don't just look at what the council or the planning commission wants to do. We also look at what our utility system can handle. And so we have mainline trunks for both our water and sewer in Highway Three. The farther you get away from Highway Three, the smaller those trunk lines get. And therefore, we are not able to even handle high-density residential into the far western portions of the city. And so we would not advocate for that because that's not responsible development. And so your R-one houses over in the west side, if you're there or in the outskirts of the city and you have a larger lot, that is fine. Going back to that, again, going back to our rezoning options for you in the programs, it is a completely voluntary project. And so let me find that one. So we did kind of plan for all of this because again, we did listen to a lot of input over the last year. All right, page two dash four, program one point three point three. The city will offer a voluntary rezoning program as part of the general plan update. The zoning program will have two categories for sites identified in our housing inventory. Sites that are vacant and underutilized, commercial and industrial properties. Sites eligible for upzoning to allow up to ten dwelling units per parcel pursuant to government code section sixty-five ninety-one three point five. The city will engage property owners of the identified sites to discuss opportunities to allow by right multifamily housing. For willing property owners, the city will offer a rezoning program that includes city underwriting for the rezoning cost to amend the land use regulations for volunteered properties to encourage property owner participation. So again, you do not have to do it if you do not want to. So I made sure when we did cater these programs for you, anywhere you have an optional program as well, where I was unsure how you would like to further go into details on programs, it's shall consider. That's it. You can literally schedule one meeting. You can talk about rent control if that passes the ballot and you can say it's not for us, it's done, program is satisfied. That's just an example. We don't have any other mention of rent control in here. So I just want to reiterate again, we made sure that there are flexibility in these. A majority of these programs prior to any of them going into effect have to come back through planning commission, have to come back through city council, have to come back through public hearings, have to come back through all of these things that will then give you the opportunity to dive into detail on some of these things. So I usually always back up people. A general plan is general. And so it's not committing you to a very specific program. It's committing you to exploring that program. And I guess one of the other things to just mention, we have other optional programs in here like support workforce pathways into the construction industry. Again, removing your optional programs would remove these types of programs that we've had people ask for. And so that's kind of coming back to the whole thing. These programs are in here because people asked for them. Not everyone asked for them and that's why we made them as voluntary as possible. And so again, we did this with a lot of care. We did this with a lot of consideration. And at this point, you know, again, I think it's the best document for you. In terms of the people who'd like to bring up my previous employment with the city of Mount Shasta, this is not Mount Shasta's plan. This is not Dunsmere's plan. This is Wai Rika's plan. Every single, every single one of those cities has very specific housing issues. You have four short-term rentals. Four. Dunsmere has eighty-four short-term rentals. We also have thirty-three point four percent vacancy rate of all of our housing units, which means they're not second, there's not second family homes. They're not short-term rentals. They're just vacant. So Dunsmere has that issue. Wai Rika has a one point two percent vacancy rate, which means only one point two percent of your total housing units are available right now for people to move into them. That is the issue we are trying to address here. This is specific to your issues. And as I said before, I understand you want to keep larger lots, residential homes, and that is not in here. I'm not getting rid of that. I understand that you like that lifestyle. We've talked about it in our visioning survey. Rural character is very important to Wai Rika and so we have options to maintain that. And so I just wanted to address some of those comments that were made that we have actually taken these things into consideration. Oh, and finally, parking requirements. Right now, the state law says that if a housing unit, ADUs, whatever, is within a half mile of a transit stop, you cannot require them to have onsite parking. That is a state law. I cannot not enforce that. It is my job to enforce state law. So, you know, just to bring those things up, some of these things in here are some of the things you're very concerned about are valid concerns, but some of it is already out of our hands. I, so it, you know, again, I would love to be fired for enforcing state law because that is a very easy HR issue. You know, again, I talk to John about that all the time. So again, you know, I just can come back to this that, you know, I think we did a really good job on this. I really appreciate the planning commission for going over it. I appreciate everyone coming here tonight and I really hope everybody continues to contribute because if you continue to contribute, I am able to plan for you. I, I hope people understand that. If you come and you say, I have this concern, we can address that. And that is what local control is. That's what this is. So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Oh, yeah. Michelle's one of our contractors.
Michelle?
Um, thank you through the chair, just very, very briefly. So I know Article thirty-four got a lot of mention this evening. I just wanted to point out that Article thirty-four, it should that go forward in any way, state, local. It only applies to publicly owned houses. That would be housing that's owned by a city, owned by a county, owned by a housing authority. Does not apply to Miss Sally moving south to live with her family and she wants to rent her house. That Article thirty-four does not apply. I just wanted to make that point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
I learned something as well.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Juliana, and thank you for your hard work and you put in it and all the support and backlash and all the time you put in with council members and the city. You put in a lot, a lot of hours with the planning commission and the city and you've done a great job on answering and facilitating and good job. Okay, Mr. Ledbetter, good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm going to keep my statements relatively brief. I'm very enthused first and foremost about how many people showed up this evening and have an opinion on this matter. It's very, it's exciting to see so many people in the chambers. I am going to say that the housing element for me, it is local control. And so if we were to remove the non-state mandate action items out of this document, we basically would be telling a large member, a large contingency of the public that their voice does not matter because that is exactly why those, those items are in the housing element is because the public came over the last year. The multiple meetings, they did the survey online and they told us what they wanted. And our planning director put those items into the housing element. So for me, that's, that's really the definition of local control. And so for a lot of folks, I just want them to know, the R-one area within our town, we would like to maintain that. And when I drive around the city of Wai Rika, I get very confused as to what transpired around here the last forty years because I don't understand why apartments exist right across the street from our mayor. I don't, I don't understand why they exist in a lot of our, our one as-is. And it's confusing when I see so many people that were born here, where were they when those things were getting developed? Because what we're advocating for is we'd like to see a development like that closer to commercial. And that would allow people to walk to work. They would not have to purchase a car. And then it would keep the R-one just as it is. So for me, I am asking the city council tonight to approve this document, to give me this tool to improve the community. Because without this tool, I don't think that the community can improve. I understand that after this item, we're going to hear from a member, hopefully he is still there from the high school and he's going to advocate for prom on Minor Street. And in the next month or so, we're going to bring back fireworks in the city of Wai Rika. And I know that those can improve people's lives minorly within the city, but we're talking about housing. This is a structural change and I am trying to lift every individual person up within the city of Wai Rika. Not just those that have and not just those that have not. But this document addresses all of those people. So I am begging the city council tonight to approve this document. And the last time I sat in front of the city council and the city council tonight to approve this document. And the last time I sat in front of the city council and begged for anything, it was to not move forward with the pool. And that, that's the last city council, unfortunately, kinda ju-
It might be good because it got beat up a little bit. He might, we can skip that. Jason, are you there? We'll give, we'll go though. We'll get him a minute to come back. And our high school student, oh, he's back. Okay, are you back? Oh. He'll, he'll come back in two minutes.
Where did you lose me?
Okay, we lost you when you're probably about ready to say you begged and got beat up when you begged us not to move the pool forward.
That is correct. So I, I am begging you tonight to give me this tool because I know that, you know, within my first thirteen months here and, and having a wife that was born in the city of Waireka and having a, a mother-in-law that's been here for fifty years or so. I understand the history of this town. I understand where we are in relation to where we could be and where we have been. And I am telling you, the city council and the public, this document takes us to exactly where everybody wants to be. And I understand there's a lot of confusion about it, and I understand it's a very difficult, uh, it's very difficult to read government language. But you are going to have to trust me uh at some point, and please trust me tonight and vote yes on this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, our city manager. And yes, our high school student is still awake over there. I don't know about his principal or not. She's not. We apologize. I tried to get you first, but we wanted him to get an experience of our city council and the way our government ran. And now you can go tell all the students at Wake High how exciting it is.
Yeah.
And, or how boring it is and whatnot, but you're the future. So we'll get you, we'll go have you up here in a minute to spot, to speak. Okay, I'm going to now go to the floor to the city council members if they have any comment or whatnot. Um, we've been, I know you guys haven't been dealing with us a year over a year we have. Um, so we've talked about it, we've talked about it. And uh for those who said, thought we don't outreach or give outreach to our citizens, that is not true. We probably see Juliana was probably the most proactive person to reach out to our citizens and hold forums at the community center several times and having hundreds of citizens write down and participate. So I give her a lot of credit because that hasn't been done before. Never has that many people have come to, our employee has reached out to our citizens to be a part of their city. And this is your city. It's my city. It's everybody's, you know, not everybody, but most of us sitting here is city. Um, so anyways, I'm gonna go to um city council, if they have any comments, and I'm gonna go to the vote. Councilman. Okay, are you getting ready? Because I'm gonna call you. You gotta be ready for me. Councilman Baker.
Mayor Middleton, um, you know, first of all, I would like, I would like to thank everybody for their time for being here tonight and for um expressing your um concerns and opinions and support and on both sides of this issue. It's not easy to come before a city council, especially uh in front of a large group of your peers as well to express your opinion. So I appreciate that. And uh I think that we can all agree that Waireka needs housing without a doubt. Um, I've talked to Mr. Ledbetter a few times, and my opinion is that Waireka is at a, is at a really, really critical point in that we're either green and growing or we're brown and we're dying. And we are at that point where we either need to move forward or just accept that Waireka is gonna dwindle and continue to decline. And um I just wanna say that I appreciate um all of the time that city staff took with me. Um, I've spent a lot of time with the planning director and with the, the um city manager um trying to digest this document. This document is not easy to read, um, and it's unfortunate that it has to be put into a language to meet governmental requirements. And so um having said that, um, I would, I'm in support of this document. I really, um, I just have a couple of questions, though. What, a couple more questions? Juliana, and that is um I just wanna um clarify again that a lot of these, these programs, when they're implemented, they're gonna come back to city council.
All of them will.
Okay, and we won't be, we won't have our hands tied into the fact that uh it's already been approved in the housing element, so we have to go forward with it.
No, so for example, when we go to do the zoning code update later this year, you know, with the land use element, that's gonna be last because I didn't want to give you guys too many hard topics in a row. Everybody loves parks. We'll do parks soon. Um, and so, uh, yes, all of the zoning code updates will be very publicly available. There will be multiple public hearings and information. And like I said, if you move forward with this document, we'll also be doing the letters. Um, so the other thing too is we could get to the zoning code update because we don't, again, you know, I think back to twenty twenty, and what happened in March is we just shut down and within a month. And so we don't know what could happen in the next eight or nine months. So we could get to a zoning code update. And we could say, you know, something has happened. We need to take that into account. We can do that. We have flexibility to do that. Um, and then basically what my job is, is to then go to state, to the state basically and go to bat and say, you know, we did have this program in here, but we're not gonna move forward for these legitimate reasons. Um, and, and basically advocate for that. And in most cases, HCD listens. I say most cases because they're changing the way that they do enforcement a- at the housing and community development. Um, they're um becoming more um litigious and citing people more. Um, but you know, again, things do change. And so um I think I was discussing this with someone at the time. Um, in the next year, next year, we could get into the envi- we um we are required to do a big environmental document at the end of all of this process. We could get into the environmental document and find that something we're proposing to do is gonna have a huge impact on the environment under the California Environmental Quality Act. And then it's up to the council to decide if you want to move forward or not with a statement of overriding considerations. So yes, you ultimately have the decision. Um, I will can, if you approve this as is, I will continue to advocate for it because this is what people have asked for, this is what you've approved. And so between councils, as time goes by, we advocate for this. But you are able to amend this, and certain things do happen, and we try to be as flexible as possible. That's why with the optional programs as much as possible, besides, you know, having the by right in the commercial areas, which we heard a lot of support for. Um, besides those, if it was anything that I had any reasonable doubt people wouldn't be okay with, I put the language shall consider. So you can consider it and you can say no, and you are completely in compliance with that program. So if it was something I had any error or any doubt in that you wouldn't be okay with, we, we added that language to give you flexibility. And I know that's like not great for people, the general public, and it's just, again, I have a master's degree in this. And so we use language to make sure to give you options. Because that's what I would like for you. So one of the interesting things is Waireka has no future vision right now. Usually with your general plans, you do a visioning, you talk about what you want to be in the next twenty years. No one did that for you, and I'm really sorry. Because if you have a vision, I can point to that and go, that's what you want. Like you want rural character or all these other things. You want to be the Emerald City of Oz. I don't care. It just, I look at your vision statement. And so hopefully at the end of this whole process, we are going to have a new one or actually have one. Um, and I can look to that. So as we go through the visioning process, me, we may even see something in here doesn't need that, and we can address that. So we, we do have ultimate flexibility. Um, what this allows me to do is one, this allows me to move forward without coming back to you constantly. So if we do get something that's in a gray area and it's talked about in here, I can go, oh, they did approve this, we're okay to move forward with this aspect. Um, but in terms of the zoning code update, in terms of the shall considers, they always come back for review. Those are always required for public hearings. Um, so if people don't know, anything that's planning or zoning related must go through public hearing notices every time. Um, budget fees, stuff like that do not need to be publicly heard, which is a whole different discussion, but yes, it does have to come through. It is a continuous process. So even once we get the general plan done, we then move into implementing it and getting down to nitty-gritty details that I think people really do want, which I understand. But we also want to make it as flexible and open as possible for possibilities as we move through, if that makes a little bit of sense.
Thank you. Um, and um I uh thank you for the additional information on Article thirty-four. Um, because that um was one of the, the major concerns that I received, and I'm looking for it right now because I am just concerned about the way that it's worded in here, honestly.
Two six.
One point three six. Um, and you pointed out that um it is actually um not appropriate under state law for um governmental bodies to, to lobby um for um support of, of these things. But there's a sentence in here that it's, that begins, the city will support and actively lobby for state and or local initiatives and referendums that seek the repeal of Article thirty-four of the state constitution. So I'm just kind of wondering if maybe we could take that out. Is that gonna be a huge thing?
That'll be a question to Michelle or Vanessa. I know, I think I both saw you there. I think if it's still communicates the intent that we're communicating, which is to put it on the ballot, we should be able to do that. Is my understanding of how the state law is, but I'm going to, I'm gonna throw this at Plan West.
Yeah, that, um, through the chair, this is Michelle. Um, yeah, I, I think the point that um council member Baker is making regarding, especially actively lobbying at the local level, um, striking that language would be appropriate. Um, and move it to strike that because she, and Juliana's point about the limits, legal limits on government lobbying um for ballot initiatives. So that, that is a, would be um a, a good word change. That would improve that program.
So what we can, what we can do um for the council, you don't have to rewrite it verbatim here. What we can do is take your intent. So um just a proposal is we would amend it to read, the city will support and actively lobby the state to add the ballot measure and basically change the language to say that, that we would not, we would not advocate for the repeal, but we would advocate for the advocate for placing Article thirty-four consideration on the state ballot, which they're already doing in twenty twenty-eight. So we don't really have to do much there, but after twenty twenty-eight, if it does not pass, we would give Waireka one more chance if they would like to consider it locally. So we can change it to be that intent if you so choose. Okay.
Thank you. Um, and uh then the the other major concern that I heard over and over again from people um was uh the stakeholders. Um, and uh as you explained to me, um the stakeholders um did include the public. Um, there were, what, almost three hundred people um that
Two eighty-four.
That completed the visioning statement. But um, you know, in the future, I would really like for the council to have the ability to just nominate s- some stakeholders in addition to uh what you're recommending. If we could have that option, I would really appreciate that.
You can always ask us to go out for additional public comment, and that, that option's actually open to the planning commission as well. And that's why we actually opened a second um interview of stakeholders. Uh, and so just to kind of um clarify, when we talk about stakeholders, it's not that stakeholders who were interviewed have greater pull than people in the general public. A stakeholder is someone who is very specifically close to an issue at hand. For example, when we move into safety and public health, we would theoretically do stakeholder interviews with people from CAL FIRE, the Forest Service, people in the California Office of Emergency Services, because they're very, very closely linked to the type of item that we're talking about. And so they would have the opportunity to contribute that way because those people are not gonna have similar experiences with that topic area as a member of the general public. Now that being said, we had the visioning survey, um, we had two general plan open houses that included housing um uh activities, which you actually uh attended, which I appreciated. Um, we also had um visioning workshops that people also uh mentioned hous- housing in. Um, and then I think I had a whole list for you guys that showed we did mention housing in a lot of different things. And so one of the things we talk about is there's the Institute of uh Public Participation. Yes, there's an entire institute on just public participation. And so what we try to do is we try to offer a variety of different public engagement opportunities and different types of things for different types of people so that they have more accessibility to do it. And so when we do those interviews, some of the questions, yes, members of the public can answer and give us inter, like input on. For example, someone could have just taken the questions that we have in the appendix and answered it and given it to me. We, I would have considered that public input. Um, and we've made those available. Um, but you know, we have to look at who we're trying to reach and the type of thing we're talking about. So for example, someone who's in property management, like um the lovely person who came up here who has eviction experience. You know, we want to talk to those people because their issues are so nuanced that people in the general public may not know it. So we want to make sure that we're capturing not just what the general public wants, but what people are actively experiencing in that industry, which is why they had that opportunity. Um, but we did, we did um provide opportunities for the general public as well to weigh in on housing. But again, as we continue to move forward, um, one of the things I've talked to Jason about is I really would like to get online uh public participation software that has a lot of different activities and ability to do more things, and I would like to do that for the other elements. So we, we work with what we have the ability to do. So if you gave me a bigger budget, I can go purchase software to go do more public outreach. And I, and I think that's the, the bigger thing too, so. So I, I do understand the concern and I understand the frustration. But we do want to continue to kind of offer a variety of different contribution styles for whatever goal we're trying to achieve. And so for example, hearing from um Mr. O'Gorman tonight, we did hear from builders and developers that they wanted fee waivers. We did hear that they wanted, um, we have a fast track application process. We are actually fine tuning our planning documents to be more clear for developers and builders. And so they're the only people who are gonna be able to give us that really fine detail. So, and that's why we do that type of thing. So I guess, yes, we can do more in the future. Um, and again, we can continue to talk about housing the entire time because it will influence the land use element. So if people want to keep talking about it, we can do that. So.
Thank you.
You can, Councilman Baker. Rachel McQuaid, you want to go?
Again, I wanna I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I appreciate, we appreciate all the input. Um, I think in my four years here, I've only seen twice that we've had this many people here. Um, once, yeah, one more time when about two and a half years ago. So it's really nice to get the input. Um, I also want to thank th- this is a, a tough document and it, and it, and it takes a lot of work. I want to thank Juliana. And I want to thank the rest of the office in there, including our city manager for working on it. I particularly want to thank Debbie Baird, Councilwoman Debbie Baird up here, uh, former Councilwoman Debbie Baird. And I want to thank former Councilwoman Jones Smith Freeman because they were on board for this and they voted for it in its initial form. And wi- without their help and their guidance, it wouldn't have gotten to where it is. I want to thank uh the planning commission, both the old planning commission and the new planning commission because our groups are dynamic. And so our, our groups are dynamic, and so they do change. But it's important to have support of the old planning commission and of the old city council. So that's, I say that. Um, you know, I, I would say that, that um the council hired Mr. Ledbetter to do a job. Our only function here is to have a business meeting, which is this tonight, twice a month. Hire and fire a city manager and set policy. Those are the only three things we have. This is an important document that we have in front of us. And it's gonna, it's gonna be the difference between, probably not my daughter because she'll never, she will not, never be able to come back here. But it will be the difference between some of your daughters and your grandkids and your great-grandkids, whether they can come back and live in this community or not. Um, it's a difference between uh if you've ever had an aged relative that, that does need an age- Um, it's a difference between uh if you've ever had an aged relative that that does need an ADU. Um, and and you can't afford the six or seven thousand dollars a month at Brookdale to put them there. And you have to have a s- a small ADU because up at the rehab home in Ashland, they say we're not releasing your mother until you have a place where you can put her on a single level. So you know, whether, you know, there's a lot of things we may agree or we may not agree with. But um, there's a lot of good here and I do see, uh, my concern reading the document is giving up too much local control. And if we are to go with just the state mandated um ideas, we're giving up total local control. Um, we are not, we're not going to be able to uh decide where we would like to see high density housing go. And so I think for that, for that benefit, we've done a real good job. To address cars bug me, they bugged the heck out of me. Californians, I think we've got between, depending on who you talk to, between forty to fifty million vehicles in California for sixty million people. I did a count on my block, um, fourteen homes. Fifty seven cars in fourteen homes on my block, fifty seven vehicles, trucks, trailers parked on the street, house trailers parked on the street. Not uncommon to have five, six vehicles and and I, we and I, and have extended families, which we do on my block. Ironically, I'm, I'm just surprised that usually there's not more than one or two cars on the, you know, on the that are parked on the street. So I'm very, very fortunate with that. Um, but yeah, car cars are an issue, but you know, again, if you, if we work with our neighbors to, you know, I, I think and we're cognizant of our neighbors and try to be neighborly. And that's the one thing I do like about living here as opposed to living in um San Diego where I lived for a while. And of course, I know I'm from Southern California. So my town that I grew up in of twenty two hundred is just a huge town because every town, everybody tells me that every town in Southern California is huge. And I know twenty two hundred is giant town, but um, you know, be- between that and hearing water bills. And again, when I, and I'm going to get on this again, when I watch uh our family sign their water bills to farm thirty nine hundred acres. And yes, that's a very, very small farm in California and we write a water bill for forty to fifty thousand dollars a month. Um, you know, kind of go, well, it's everything in perspective, but we got a good document. If we believe in our city manager and we believe in our town and we believe in our city planner and our assistant city manager and our finance manager and our police chief and and uh then uh we need to, we need to pass it. And if we don't, their job's very easy. They can sit back and do whatever the heck they want for the next four years because they're going to have nothing to do. There's not going to be any, just, but we won't have any sort of, we don't have any sort of vision.
Except for Chief Kilman.
Well, I'm sorry, Chief, I, I apologize. I yield my time back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Keg.
So there was, if anybody doubts that any of us in the council read these documents and just skim through it, then all you have to do is look at my document here and all the little notes are sticking out and look at Mr. McCoy's.
Mine's highlighted.
They're sticking out.
Sorry.
I can't see from here, but
I don't have stickers.
We've read through this, the Planning Commission read through this thoroughly. And if you would read through this, you'd see what Juliana expressed on a lot of this, eh, where it says, city shall consider the shall consider, the city shall consider, the city shall consider this. It's something that's nothing mandatory. There's nothing that's saying that's mandatory that the city does this. This has to come back through the Planning Commission, has to come back through the city council. There's nothing that we're giving the authority to the state automatically. It's giving us options. And that's what people need to realize that this is giving us options for the future to do different things. Do we have to do some of these things? Yeah, the state's mandatory, making some of these mandatory that we have to do some of these. But these other ones are options, options that we have the choice to decide. ADUs, we're already doing them. Hate to tell you, if you're against ADUs, sorry, it's already here. It's already coming. They're already coming. We already, we okayed ADUs, what, two years ago as a council? So it's two or three years ago. It's already been okayed. It's, it's something that's not going to change. It's, is it going to happen in every house? No, it's not going to happen in every house. No, we're not going to have ADUs in every house. It's only once, like um for me, for instance, there might be down the road, you might need one for an aging parent that can't afford to have a house around town. That happens all the time. I don't know if the rest of you has aging parents, but it's going to happen. You're going to have to deal with it. You're going to have to have someplace for them to go. If you can't afford for to send them to an old folks home, then you need to br- bring them in their backyard, I guess, but that's where we're at. So these things, there's a lot of research that went into this. There's a lot of time that went into this. There's a lot that we did as a council, reading through this, the Planning Commission read through this. Um, it's nothing that we're taking lightly. Obviously, this is something that's huge, but it's also huge for development of our city. We also need to look at it like I s- like stated earlier, the kids coming back to our area. My stepson, he can't come back to this area. There ain't nothing here. We don't have housing. We don't have workforce. We don't have nothing here, pal. Nothing. So unless we start making some moves to bring back some of these kids, then we have to, we accept this is just going to be a retirement home for a place that you can't live in your own house because we don't have a place for handicap access. So this is the other thing is you open up homes for handicap accessibilities. Why do I know that? Because I dealt that for fifteen years watching my dad in a handicap situation. Luckily, we had a place for him to go, which was his home. We adapted, but that's not a luxury for everybody. So it's one of those things. We've done our due diligence. We've looked at this. Um, we're addressing, thank you for bringing forth the one three six. Um, because that was exactly what I wanted to change the verbiage on. So you hit it perfectly. Thank you. Going for that. Um, I don't think there's anything outside of Dad.
All right. You can cancel my break. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Sorry, I felt like I'm in a podcast with those many.
Looking around a little bit. Um, i- it's a fact, we do need housing and it's obvious everybody said that. Um, I, I just think going with just state mandated things is not the way to do that in this um housing element. But I, I have some feelings here. I don't feel that we should uh subsidize the uh ADUs and JADUs and section or the SP nine homes. Um, and if it says we shall promote accessory buildings, I don't think we need to promote them. That they're already here. I don't think that we need to promote them. I don't think that needs to be in there.
I guess just to clarify through the, the chair, we do not have any like type of subsidy program recommended for that. So the subsidies that we have are the fee waivers would be for, as I discussed before, affordable and workforce housing. So the promotion program is about providing educational, educational materials, public outreach, information for builders and developers. And then the county is actually developing pre-stamp plans for ADUs and so we would
And the fee waivers, Juliana.
Did we let him finish his comments and then replied and then replied to his concerns?
Oh, I apologize. I just
We're going to let you finish your public.
Oh, that's okay. I don't mind the dialogue. That's fine. Juliana, what's the fee waivers for?
The fee waivers would be a program that would come back for you for consideration. And so what we put in here is the consideration of fee waivers for workforce housing and affordable housing. And so you can or you could not include ADUs. So ADUs already have a significant amount of fee waivers and that's not subsidized through our funds. And I forgot to bring this up earlier. Um, your
That's through the state.
Yeah, yeah, that's through the state. So the state um regulations that went into account, if you have an ADU, they're exempt from certain development impact fees, connection fees, and even school fees if they meet certain criteria. And so um we cannot charge connection fees for ADUs as they sit now. And so some of the other things are based off of um size. There's a really nice handbook that outlines all of this um that we would make available um for the general public, property owners, developers who would want that. Um, a- and just to really quickly point out, um, your water bill does not subsidize anybody. So your water bill goes to water projects and that's the Proposition two eighteen process. So we would not be taking money from any other pots in the local um government situation for these programs. The only one that we have for consideration by the council after a background report is, is done is a housing impact fee ordinance. But again, we have that in here as a consider as well as an option for you. So there would be no subsidy. So like, for example, if someone has a, a five hundred fifty five or five hundred fifty thousand dollar single family home, there's no fee or anything applied to that that would subsidize low income housing. Now, there is a program in here where you can consider that as a council and that would again come back here. There's a background report requirement in here for that and you may say, no, we don't want to do that. So it does not mandate any of that. And then we're not advocating to take from any other pots of money because legally we cannot do that. So
Thank you. I was aware of the water situation.
Okay, I just remember someone from the public brought it up and we, we deal with that a lot at the city. So I like to
Brought the water to Wairika, were alive and frequented my establishment. They talked about that. They also said ten dollars is going to be that water bill forever, you know? So that's not the case. I, I, I don't really think, you know, I know what an ADU is. It's like a house over your garage, you know, a little apartment up there and that kind of stuff or something in your basement or you can build a, like a jade, you out back five hundred square feet or less. Yeah.
So, so you can do a detached ADU up to twelve hundred square feet. And the other thing to note about ADUs is you, you are not required to do fire sprinkler unless the main house has fire sprinkler. And then if you're using a modular ADU, you do not have to do solar. So you actually do also get building code um exemptions and that's the state law. So they're real, they're really trying to promote those ADUs at the state level. They, they've exempted them for a lot of stuff.
But my feeling is that's going to be a mistake. I, I think we're going to end up with a bunch of junk in our homes and so that I'm not in favor of those. So that's, that's pretty much what I have, Corey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Right, I'm um. As Mr. Ledbetter said, I live, are you okay? Don't top the night off with emergency for me. Gosh, scare me. Um, as Mr. Ledbetter stated before, that I uh live in an area of uh an upper west minor near housing that probably houses low income, median come, working class. And it disheartened me when I heard people say, those people, those people are my neighbors. They're very nice to me. I walk my dog and they walk their dogs. They say hi to me. People said, oh, you're going to get your house broken too. You're going to have stuff stolen. I haven't had that. I left a weed eater out one night that was there. Um, so they're very nice people. Yes, the cops do um. You know, are there quite a bit because when you like, Mr. Gilman explained one time that when you have a lot of people living in one area, you're going to get frequently more calls. And um, but that was poor planning on the city's part. This is, that should have happened years ago. Those apartments should have been built up there, but it is what it is. They've been there since the seventies, I believe, right, sixties, seventies? The seventies, because I remember. Seventy two, yeah. I was going to say, I was little, my mom picked a bowling partner up one time. She lived there. So I was just a few years old, so I know it was the seventies. Had it been better planning and even just around the corner and do it away, you have triplexes, duplexes all along there by the church. Um, so this is actually gives us a little more control. It's not, you know, it's, but actually it's going to be better for the city. Um, so I'm gonna end with that. Mr. Davis comes back, I'm going to come to the the vote.
So then I've just been crafting um the amendment to program HE dot one point three point six for your consideration.
Yeah, let me make sure real quick. So I'll go to the council fast and um get a consensus that it's okay if I raise an agreement for the amendment that Councilman Baker proposed um for the item, I don't know what the item is, but for thirty four.
One three six.
What is it?
He'll be back.
He'll be back.
Need to go for a walk.
Okay, stretch it out. Point of order. The uh Attorney Henyon, can you hear?
If I can get to my button, I can.
Okay, we can hear you.
I got a point of order here.
Um, Mr. McCoy has a question.
Recommended city council action, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three oh five. Quote, a resolution of the city council, the city of Wairika adopting the twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one housing element update and approving the California Environmental Equality Act, SEQA exemption pursuant to SEQA section one five zero six one subsection B, subsection three, close quote. If we're going to amend this document tonight, can we make a motion on that or does it have to come back to the council for a, a vote on that amendment?
No, it's um, that's just a recommended action and the council can divert from that recommended action. It's not locked into it. So if, if uh whoever makes the motion says um the substance of that motion as amended by the comments of uh council uh member Baker, then um that would work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think he's still behind the curtain.
Are you still listening, Drake?
Okay, so I have, I have
I just want to kind of get, it's getting late and we have another student here. That's why I'm ready to go to bed. So I'm trying to get him back here for the vote if we can.
Quick, so what I have and I'm going to send it to Michelle um and Vanessa for them to make sure that we're okay. But the city, so what I've done is changed this to the city shall consider a vote of Article thirty four of the state constitution to remove regulatory barriers for publicly owned affordable rental housing. The city will support and actively lobby the state and or local initiatives and referendums to allow the electorate of Wairika to vote in a statewide and or local election on the potential repeal of Article thirty four. And then I keep the regular language. Did you want me to remove the word active, uh actively lobby as well? So basically it would now read, the city will support the state and or local initiatives and referendums to allow the electorate of Wairika to vote in a statewide or local election on the potential repeal of Article thirty four. And then it keeps the same language because it basically says um if passed by a majority of qualified voters would allow the city to develop, uh construct or acquire low cost housing. So I kept the last sentence basically, but I just wanted to add the consider a vote. And then I wanted to cl- um clarify that it would be for publicly owned affordable rental housing. It would not impact private owners. So for example, if they do put a ballot measure that would impact private owners, that would not apply to this program. So it would be up to your discretion as a council, whether you would support, you know, putting that on a ballot or not for privately owned. If that's available to you legally, I don't understand all of the nuances for the privately owned rent, uh rental control, but I can look into it. Um, if you so choose. So.
Okay. Mr. Davis, are you ready to come back for the vote? We're going to go to the vote.
Can you?
Can you? I see him moving there.
If not, you can just go ahead and vote without him.
Well, you can.
You have the um, we have the remote mic for you.
Okay, so I'm going to do the vote for the recommend city, city uh recommended city council action, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash oh five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Wairika adopting the twenty twenty three dash twenty thirty one housing element update, approving the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA exempt pursuit to SEQA section one oh five six one B three with the amendment of the wording just was read from our planning director that was requested by Councilman Baker and that consensus was, it was okay uh with that amendment. So I'm going to go to the floor for a vote with the recommended action with the, the amendment. I'll go to the floor. What's do you say?
So moved, Councilman McCoy.
I have a motion for yes by Pro Tim McCoy. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second from Councilman Keg. I'll go for roll call. Councilman Keg. Councilman Davis.
No.
Councilman Baker.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Me, Middleton, I. The motion passes four to one with yay from Keg. Nay from Davis, yay from Baker, yay from Middleton, yay from McCoy. Thank you, everybody for coming. And now we're gonna go to um real quick, our Wairega High School senior prom on Minor Street. I hope your parents didn't have a curfew on you. I don't know. And we'll let we'll let the crowd clear so we can hear you. I apologize it went so late. We're sorry it went so late. I tried to have you go first and they said no. They wanted you to go through this experience. You all right?
Let's get it moving quickly as possible.
Okay. Quiet. Call the order, call the order. Okay, we do have a an agenda item. This is uh. We have a Wairega uh, sorry, long night. I did a title. This is the Wairega High School Senior Prom on Minor Street. And Wairega High School Senior Prom is scheduled for May thirteenth, twenty twenty three. From eight to eleven P M. We have speakers this evening to present the idea to the city council for the engagement. Level for and consideration of the event. Additionally, Police Chief Gilman, City Manager Ledbetter. City Attorney Henyon will be addressing questions and concerns regarding the event. Good evening. Wanna state your name for the council?
Hello, I am David Nelson and I am the junior class president. I'm here before you today to represent the class of two thousand twenty four as well as the class of two thousand twenty five. On the whereabouts of prom. In the beginning of this year, right around October, I was struggling to find a venue for our. Wairega prom. I went through a couple of different establishments. Uh, the minors in, I even thought to even have it on one of our school gyms, but um it was, it is currently under. Construction. Um, I actually eventually had a beautiful idea from um our lovely Mrs. Dawes, our. School principal.
And you can speak directly to us. They're gonna address us. They're gonna listen to you.
Sorry.
I'm gonna give you a, give you a one on one on city council. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Address us.
Where was I?
Thank you. Um, the school gym is under construction.
With the idea. So I went with this beautiful idea. So the idea is. On May thirteenth, two thousand twenty three, um we would go ahead on starting off from. Strings Italian Cafe on the west side, we would block off that corner, that part of the street. All the way down to Third Street as well as to Fourth Street. Um, we will be having a DJ as well as preparing food. Um, and drink, of course, non alcoholic. We will have chairs and decorations. Um. Um, yeah, we will also have school staff as well as local members of our community. Um, helping police this area to keep out unwanted visitors. We will have a. One, so we'll have a one entrance and one exit. With staff and the people who we will be allowed letting in. Will be the Wairega High School students, our seniors and our juniors. Yeah, now you might be wondering why Minor Street. Well, it is my personal opinion that Minor Street is, as we have seemingly debate debated about. Um, that Minor Street is the beating heart of our home. Not only is it the historical center of our town. But it is where our community is. It is where our community, community gets its personality. It is where I grew up and where I was introduced into my love of history. Um. So I thought, what a better place to. Send off our seniors than to have it at the beating center place of our home. And not only, now, this has been a very long process. I have gone to. Um, the city manager, I have gone to the three businesses that are affected on Minor Street. Um, Victor's Strings and Leo Main's, um as well as the school board, all of which have approved. You all are my final piece for prom on minor and I hope. That we are able to approve this.
Thank you so much. It's so weird calling you Miss Dawes because I know her as Rhonda cuz I went to high school with her and it's weird that you're the. Yeah, so it's weird to say Ms. Dawes when I know it's Rhonda cuz I went to high school with her and as proud as she's a principal of our school. Principal Dawes. Okay, so I'm gonna um. Opened up to public comment first. Does anybody have any public comment regarding this young man's proposal to? Request that we approve his um prom on Minor Street for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So come on up, public comment regarding his wonderful idea.
As a business owner in that section, should be closed off. I highly support this. I think it's a wonderful idea and um shop serendipity completely backs it.
Thank you so much. Then come on down.
Uh, good evening, Quentin Gaddy. I work in Wairega, Siskiyou Economic Development. Um, I was actually at the high school yesterday giving a presentation on uh my experience working three jobs through college. And my career and coming back to Siskiyou County after being gone for close to a decade and what that experience was like. And I actually met David in the first class I was presenting for and he stood up and he shook my hand and he introduced myself. He's very cheerful. And towards the end of the class, he asked me for advice for speaking in front of council. And I, you know, asked him what he was looking at, saying what he's fixing to do, you know, with prom on. And I told him, you know, it'd be fine. You got nothing to worry about. You got all the information behind you. Little did I know he was presenting tonight of all nights. That's the one. That's something I didn't know. But I do wanna say I am fully supportive of this idea. I wish when I was in high school, we could have done something like that. But any activities that the city can do that drives more attention and more activities and more events down to Minor Street is going to be good for the business community. It's going to create this sense of destination and belonging. And as you mentioned, it's like the cornerstone of our community. So as a, as a uh member of the public and someone who works with many, many businesses, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Abatch Kalupi and what a great presentation. Congratulations. And I also like the fact that he tried to include us all in. Which I'm sure he's been taught in school.
Yes. A little different here, yes.
But I fully support. Doing this. I think it's a wonderful idea and what a great thing to do. So. I'm for it.
Thank you.
Lori Kaiser Boswell, speaking as a mom of a junior. Uh, she happens to go to Golden Eagle, but her girlfriend goes to Y T S. I'm assuming they're going to the prom. I think it's a great idea. I first heard about this Saturday night when I was at an event at Copper Venue and the owner there, Lauren, said. I could be open that night if they need an indoor space. So that's one more minor street. Business that I know is behind this. So, well done, Y H S. I love the idea.
I waited all night to finally say something. Throw it out in me. Um, Siskiyou County Supervisor Nancy O'Gran, pleasure to meet you, David.
Thank you.
Principal Dawes. Um, I fully support your effort here. What a wonderful idea. My, both my kids graduated. From Wairega High School. When I wish somebody had thought of it then. Um, what a wonderful idea and I fully support it and I will drive by. And give you all a high five. Oh, no, maybe. I'll chaperone. There you go. Won't that be fun? I don't have to wear a phone dress. Oh, good, okay. Fully support the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor O'Gran. And thank you for being here.
All right. Tom O'Gorman, Wairega area. David, was it?
Yes.
I think that's a fabulous idea and well planned out. Good job and I hope you approve that for this young man and his class. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi there. Keith Callison, I'm I'm the Board of Trustees at Wairega High School. And I have to tell you that uh David's plan was voted on unanimously by the school board. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Where I said that we just moved here. We like it here. This is the kind of thing that we like. I think these kids, they've worked worked long and hard. They need it.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so um. I will. Close public comment and go to our council members, Councilman Cake. He's eager over there. I'll go to him first.
Comments or you want?
Any comment? Any, I'll go for comment. I'll go, I'll go for comments first. And if you don't wanna have a comment, then well.
Well, comment wise, it's uh, I'm glad to be here. Thank you. It's very creative of being able to step up. And talk to the council like that takes a lot of courage and I, you know, great guts and I love it. Just hopefully see some bigger things out here. That's awesome. Um. You know, like we're talking, I would like to see um more events like that brought into the high school and stuff. I'd love to see um. Steps on graduate, them doing that or even my grad, my, my senior years and stuff, you know, being maybe. Minor Street and stuff more too.
All right, thank you, Councilman K. Councilman Davis. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Sorry.
Anytime you can get out on Minor Street, that's a good idea. We like Minor Street. I obviously like it. And uh, your principal is a pretty awesome like.
Councilman Davis. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think it would be highly um. A good idea for you to hear from Chief Gilman before you proceed any further.
Oh, I'm sorry, were we supposed to? I'm getting a little tired. Oh, yeah, it does say that. I'm sorry. Okay, before we go any further, Chief Gilman's gonna come down and talk. Good evening, Chief. I'm sorry, Don. I was on half asleep over here. It's been a long night.
Hi, Chief Gilman, Wairega Police Department. So we've talked about this. Um, I support everything we could do for the kids and I support the high school and everything we have going on. I do have some concerns that should have came to me before we did this. I have some terms that maybe the city attorney can address, but to closing a public street. And not allowing anyone in. I don't know what my authority would be to kick people out at this time. We have a lot.
I don't think you have any.
What was that?
He said, I don't think you have any.
You don't have any.
Right, I was gonna let him speak to that. Less I'm told otherwise. So it's something that we should discuss first with law enforcement before we make a decision on this, I believe. Um, having officers there can help. But it's going to cost a lot just to secure it. We'll have to block intersections with vehicles such as fire trucks that be manned by firefighters. We'll have to have police at the intersections. And then if I have no authority to take anyone out, I don't know how we're gonna secure the event. Or the safety of the kids, which is my biggest concern. I have an S R O in the schools and I worry about, you know, school shootings, things like that. When we have a large event like this, it's in the outside. I would at least have to have six officers there or more just for the kids to be feel safe. My children grew up here too and went to school here. I do support these events. I think I should have been a part of the conversation to start with so we can at least address some issues or locations. So that's my biggest concern as we're looking at safety and money for that. And if anyone has questions, I'm here. I can step aside if I'll come back if we have more or I can answer them now. Maybe the city attorney can address more of my legal authority and city manager also.
All right.
Thank you.
Don't go far, you might be called down. Mr. Henyon.
Well, it's certainly a highly unusual proposition. Um, my um. Um, knowledge of high school proms may be a little dated, but they were usually enclosed um circumstances. The um uh, students were um. Uh, made sure that they were sober when they came in and if they left, they were not allowed back in. And I don't know um if you're gonna have that kind of control um in uh a main street type situations. Kids could slip in and out, uh drink alcohol, um and um the situation could um. Uh deteriorate on you. Um, so I, a- as as I mentioned earlier, I I do not think. We have the authority to um stop um others from entering the street. Um, I could research that, but I quickly went online and um everything I saw was um against that. Proposition um being the idea that public property means public property. So um I leave it to your discretion of whether you um think that the city um should. Participate in this venture.
Thank you, Mr. Henyon. Do you wanna comment?
So ideally, we've had some outside dances. Um, and obviously I've had to manage, um, you know, any students who are drinking and that's obviously. We have a breathalyzer. We um, we have the authority to breathalyze every student who actually enters into our dances and and we have. Um, so we have that option. Um, and we can make that, you know, clear. We can have one entrance and one exit and we can work on that together. Um, we have some huge gating things that we have used um in the past for our outdoor dances for like with our buildings. And so um, and we've used them at the football facility also, which could, which we thought could help with preventing. You know, students leaving and students coming in. I have a minimum of fifteen chaperones um on our end. With four administrators and a campus liaison, including also um Officer Quigley as our resource officer along with. You know, ten other parents. And then we wanted to be able to have resources out to obviously more Y P D, the sheriff's office, C H P. Do we have parents with Cal Fire? Do we have, you know, do we have some resources within our school also? Um, and then can we gate those, you know, those areas to prevent? And have them, you know, monitored by, you know, whether it's P D and or parent chaperones. So that students are not able to go into the areas that we have, you know, not designated an exit and or an entrance. And and having one exit and one entrance. Students know that um when they leave a dance, they are not allowed to come back. And that's, and we're very strict on that with our dances. And it's very clear that if you are caught under the influence. That you, if you're a senior, you actually don't walk at graduation. And um beyond that, we go, you know, into a full discipline. You know, matrix with us with a full suspension and or looking at expulsion. And I am pretty black and white with my discipline and the students are pretty aware of that. So on that end, I mean, that's what we've envisioned. Um, Addison or David, when he first presented, I think the area on the street is pretty big. Um, I would like to narrow that down and he and I have had that conversation and we could, you know, we could do that and and with Y P D and go, you know, is this realistic? You know, and so, I mean, we're open to suggestions on that end of it too. Um. But my biggest concern is making sure that it's it's safe for my students to be in there. I have to say, I'm not as worried about them as I am about the outsiders coming in. I can't have outside people coming into the dance and that's probably my biggest concern. So I can't have adults coming in who are not supposed to be in there and I can't have that be the circumstance that I have to manage. So.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. I'll ask a quick question. I'll ask a quick question. Is that okay? Can I make a quick question? Oh, go ahead. Okay. So, is the high school, are they willing to pay for our additional officers that night if we had to bring on extra staff to work that night? Cause of course we have our regular patrol
Sure.
and cops that have to be out on duty. Are they willing to pay for our officers if we have to have them for certain hours to pay for the officers who were willing to work that, but they're.
Yeah, I'd have, I mean, that's superintendent and question and I just need a dollar amount and then an, an ask on that. So.
Okay.
I don't know how realistic that is on my end.
As it sounds like, but Chief Gilman is saying he's going to have to have extra officers come in and we, I don't know how this budget's going to pay for that.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say.
Don't boo me, people. I'm just saying this facts here.
I just, I wasn't included in any of this. So I just found out about a couple of days ago. So trying to figure out how we're gonna do it. There's also apartments there. So how do we monitor the people that actually live there? There's apartments above some of the buildings. We could have adults walking out of their house and your concern about you can't have anyone in there. I have no authority to make anyone leave. If someone wants to come in there, they walked out of the bar, wants to walk over, see all the noises. I can't force them knocking them in. That would be illegal when you sue by the city. So those are my concerns and it's gonna take a lot more conversation, a lot more logistics than just to say we're gonna close the street.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Gilman. So I guess my question would be, oh, I gotta bring it back. Gonna bring it back to council. So I'll bring it back to the council. Um, is it okay if I go first before I lose my train of thought? I'm gonna go first for once. So, okay. Uh, well, no, go ahead. I'll, I'll say mine for last. I don't want to hear everybody else's first. I'm gonna change my mind. I'm sorry. Councilman Baker.
Um, thank you. Um, David, excellent presentation. You have a great future ahead of you. So, um, I want to thank you for that. And, you know, thank you for being so creative. And, um, I think that you guys were probably not gonna be very happy with me in a couple of minutes, but I, I do have some real concerns. Um, you know, I, I did think about the people that live in the apartments, um, on Minor Street. What if they, you know, wanted to come and go? Um, is it legally possible to keep them away from that area?
Yeah.
Um, have we ever closed a city street before for a private event? This is considered a private event. So that concerns me and, um, what city staff would be utilized and do we have a precedence of using, um, the public officers for private events, um, versus, um, hiring security? Um, that concerns me. Um, and if we are using officers, you know, from YPD, in the horrible case that they might get hurt, who's liable and who is the city gonna pick up that cost of that liability? Um, and then I'm also thinking about the fire hall that's right there. So is there gonna be a contingency, um, plan for alternative routes in the event that the fire um, department has to respond someplace? And, um, I, um, I applaud you um, for this effort. Um, and I really do hate to be the bearer of all these questions, but, um, have you considered, you mentioned that you had looked into, um, other locations. Have you considered, uh, if you want to have an outdoor dance, uh, maybe the fairgrounds? Um, or if you want to be on Minor Street, have you considered the Elks Hall? Um, so.
So, so I actually, um, went ahead and talked to the, our junior, our junior class committee about this and I actually set up a backup plan just in case this falls through. Um, I have about, I, I got, so this was my main plan. Um, my other plan is that one of our students did mention using the fairgrounds, but the problem with the fairgrounds is since it's such a large area to go ahead and govern, it would be quite difficult for not only our school staff, but even locals in our community to make sure that those students are safe and not running behind the bushes and doing something stupid. Um, um, my other plan behind that was I did talk to, um, the YMCA and Scott, um, his backup, I actually contacted him and he is willing for our backup plan just in case there was weather events or something fell through that or it didn't work out that, um, we would be able to use the YMCA gym as our prom venue. And last but not least, um, would be our own high school, which, um, would be the cafeteria. So.
Right. I did. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I believe, and then I'll go to Councilman Davis. I believe you wouldn't be able to use the fairgrounds during that time period because they do have the prisoners that come in during that time and they, they use Bydema Hall and the two other outbuildings. So they would not allow you to have that event there because they're, California shut all their facilities down. So the CAL FIRE, they're what used to be, um, Deadwood Camp, that works for the fires or house there. And so they wouldn't be having teenagers having an event at that time in May. I can guarantee you that. So, does it clarify that? Mr. Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we should try to think of ways to make this happen.
Rather than table it.
Ways for it not to happen. I think we should try to be proactive on this. Um, it's an unusual request, yes, but it's a doable request and um, the high school knows the responsibility and the liability that they're bringing to the city. But I, I think that's something that we can probably move forward. Just, that's just what I think.
Councilman K.
I think we need, um, I don't know what our time constraints are for your guys' end of this, but I think we need to bring it back with the, um, looking into of Chief Gilman on what he can do on his end, what we can do on our end. I know there's a lot we can do on our end. Shutting down the streets obviously is not a, a big issue as far as fire and all that stuff. We've done it thousands of times. We've put on events and I've put on numerous events on that. So I know for a fact. Um, so the fire hall can have our turn, alternative routes and stuff like that. So that's not an issue. I'm sure Chief, uh, Lemus would be willing to work with that as much as we could on that. Um, yeah, as far as the other detail, I think we could put some of this stuff out like, um, Councilman Davis was saying, I think we should as a council try to, uh, figure out ways of supporting this as much as we can. Um, it's our, our use that we need to look at and it's next generation. So I think it's a highly important. We do need to look at the legal aspects, obviously of all that. Um, so I think that's something that we need to take in consideration. So I think this needs to be brought back and not, uh, needs to be tabled at this point in time.
Yeah. So if we bring it back to our next council meeting to have, is that going to break the deal or not if we give you guys more time to talk with our chief of police, our city attorney? Yeah. I advocated for you guys to be on the top agenda and I got declined.
So.
But I didn't know we were gonna be three and a half hours long. So it wouldn't.
Yeah. We're not pressed for time. So we can set up another meeting. That's not, I mean.
So if we, um, get more time to have, uh, then I'm gonna let Miss, I see your hand. I see your hand. I see it. I'm like, um, so if we come back on, would that be February twenty first?
I think so.
Yeah. So the plan would be, uh, for us to meet and then do we need to meet with also?
Then he had.
With chief and then no one else? I mean, do we need to?
You come back to the city council again. They're gonna give us our, uh, their findings, recommendations, discussions, their, their discussions with the police, with the
Okay.
high school, our attorney, our city manager. Then you come back again. They say we had meetings. This is what we came up with. Yeah, we can make it work or no, it's gonna be impossible or what the bigger plan is, but I don't think we should. I think we should work on it. I think it's a brilliant idea. And I heard there was others. Did you look to see if there was other cities that have done this before?
Yes.
And other cities have.
Came, I hadn't seen the cities, but that's how I came up with the idea.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. And then he, Mr. McLean.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, um, request that, uh, Assistant City Manager sit in on the meeting as well as the Fire Chief um, with them.
I'd like to sit in as well.
For, um, um, you know, to, to, just to be honest about this, uh, Ms. Dawes was a, uh, Principal Dawes was a ref. Uh, when I was in the twenty-three years I worked at Jackson Street, she worked with our, our kids and, um, was wonderful to teach them during the game when they were getting teed, uh, ticked off because they were gonna get teed or something and she tried to explain to them why. Um, Ms. Dawes, um, and I, I'm putting the cart before the horse. You, you need to understand that also, but I, my wife and I, with our sixty-seven years of education, um, teaching and administration would, would love to help if there's any way we could help. Um, we could pass background checks. I, I could tell you that. Um, I know that most of the apartments up there have, I think all the apartments, the ones that Kevin Downing used to own in Virginia, they have a rear entrance. Um, the one that's on top of the old, family's building has a rear entrance. Um, you know, I know that there's a rear entrance for Gary's building there. And I am in agreement with, uh, Councilman Davis that I think we need to look long and hard at this. Um, I'm only sixty-five, but in high school, we had a, all of our dances were out of doors because we didn't have air conditioning in the gym. And then when the gym's a hundred and twenty, when it's a hundred and twenty out during the day, the gym doesn't cool down. So at least it was ninety by the time our dances started at eight or nine o'clock. Um, my number one concern as an educator would be alcohol and drugs. There is no foolproof way to do it. I'm surprised you can breathalyze them because when I retired twelve years ago, you could not breath, you, we couldn't breathalyze kids or do anything like that. So that's. So that's wonderful. And I know that they have a contract and they lose a lot of their privileges if they, you know, if they go there. Um, prom is a public event. Uh, it is not a private event, although I don't know how you guys operate it, but like in my school, only juniors and seniors could go, but in other schools, sometimes it's freshmen, sophomore, and you can bring people from other, from other schools. Um, my, uh, caveat to Attorney Henyon would be not to worry so much about whether or not we can shut a street down. My caveat is what does the California Education Code say when you are out in a public area and you are on an exclusive event? Uh, and then the California Education Code is gonna dictate to, uh, to Ms. Dawes and the, uh, Board of Trustees and all the chaperones what they can and can't do. And it's probably gonna dictate somewhat to Officer, uh, to Chief Gilman. Again, I know that the law is different within a school setting that doesn't always, it doesn't just apply to the physical setting. It, the, the setting can be movable if they're playing in a CIF playoff game at the Arco Arena for basketball or something like that. So that would be, uh, Attorney Henyon, that would be my question. I mean, I, I, again, I think this is a, I think it's a positive thing and I know I've jumped the gun, but I'd like to see it come back to us and I'll yield my time back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, um, this is not a defeat. This is how government works. We're not saying no to you. But we have to cover our areas and, um, we want Mr., uh, Chief Gilman to be involved with the police and I will come to the next meeting as well with our Assistant City Manager, our Fire Chief and Mr. Ledbetter. If you have that down, Assistant City Manager Hogan. And that's coming back on, um, February twenty first, correct? And I'll make sure you're first.
Thanks.
Up on the agenda. You yielded your time. Now you want it back?
Yeah, I want it back. You might want to address for, for advocation of non-law enforcement and non-educational people that haven't, that haven't worked in the system. How you deal with active shooters? Not that we would have one there and, but how, and, and, and how you deal with the day and the light, because I know this is something that Wyrica High does very well. I know what you're training, what training you go through. I know what training you went through at Jackson Street with our student body. And I think that would benefit you in sharing it with us.
Great. So. Yeah. Well, he has a backup plan. It's gonna be, it's gonna be nice weather for him. So our consensus is to, um, uh, table it and we're gonna see back on February twenty first. I'm gonna see you again and meet with you guys with our staff and, um, you'll be back to see us again. And thank you so much. Like I said, you did a great job. It's not a no. We just need to work out some more details. And so, great job. Very exciting idea. Very excited for our, our, um, town. And you're probably second to, this will give you some good feeling when you walk out of here. Besides, everybody went through the first agenda item with public speaking. You got a lot of people to come up and support you. So congratulations. That's pretty amazing.
I just wanted to say, thank you for all the people who came up and, um, supported my idea and thank you guys for listening and being willing to table it and work with me on this. I, I had a feeling that there were some pieces that I was missing. I, I did. I, I was thinking about it as I was driving here. I was going, there has to be something. There has to be something that we're, we haven't done yet.
You have five different minds up here that you have to deal with. Good job. Thank you. And we'll see you back on the twenty first.
Later. Have a great day.
Yes. Okay, so we are, good, letting, letting some people go here. We'll let them settle down. Good night. Thank you, everybody for coming tonight. We're not done, but you guys can leave. No. Good night, Superintendent. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you. What else do I have to do tonight? My gosh, wrap it up.
So. She's the one that married Debbie and I.
Oh, wow. Uh, City Manager, are you still on the phone or did you go to bed? Mr. Ledbetter?
He's gone.
Are you still with us?
No, he's gone.
Okay. So no report from him. Um, are you gonna, do you want to do a reporter? No.
I was just gonna say, we've already reached out to our, um, risk insurer on the event. Should it happen to get their perspective. So we've already received response on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, tell, any councilor comments or reports? Are we, I'll go, Mr. Cake?
Are you, again? The only thing I can, I have to just talk about just real quickly is
Quickly.
The point in time counts. How it was great. We thank John Marie and Lorenzo for being there and handing out stuff. Thank you guys. Uh, everybody that participated, um, this boy was a huge role in this.
I stopped by.
Very huge success.
I didn't do anything.
Time count was, and we'll have some numbers soon for you guys. Uh, looks like the numbers, uh, whether you want to call it good or bad, were greater numbers. Um, actually, South County was a lot greater than we anticipated.
Really?
Yeah, Mount Shasta and, and Dunsmere was a lot bigger numbers this year than they were last year. So, uh, I'm gonna leave it at that. I just want to thank everybody to be involved for that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Davis.
I don't think we have, uh, just many people at a
No.
Council meetings, everyone, uh, they try to get rid of the
I was, I wasn't living here and I'm glad I wasn't on council.
Good house.
Yes. The only second time since I've been here in two years has been this crowded. Is that it? Okay, you're done.
That's all.
Okay. Councilman Baker.
I'm ready to go to bed.
Okay, me too. And me, I just want to, um, congratulate the city council on doing their homework, working together. It was a very heated item. We're going through with it. Um, very proud of this council for working together. The questions they've been asking our staff, um, yeah, so we're moving forward. I'm very proud of this council and gonna be proud of our city in the future. Hopefully everything will come together. And everybody's gone now, but thank you for coming. Good night.